Prince Kuhiu Day is near the end of this month. And our Kilkau Community as Hawaiian Homestead Community Association just celebrated their 100th year. So I thought we would, we would, you would join me in singing. Ku'ohome o ke'oka. And the words are up there. Ike'ia, ike'ia, i'kanani o ke'oka. Ho'me'ulu ve'i ve'i i'ka'ulu'ala. Hilo'e'a i'kamaka o kale'ule. The gift. Hema'ka na'ke'ia mai ke'ali. Malama'po no'iho ahe'ai vai nu'i. O ke'ola no'i ka'upu nu'ua. Mahalo. And this was written by Albert Nahalia, who is a family homestead in Kilkau to show his aloha for the efforts of Prince Kuhiu. And Hawaiian in infecting, introducing and effective, he without voting power affected the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. Aloha nu'i.
Thank you, Kahue and Ante Kanani, you still got it? Okay, the meeting of the Hawaiian Homes Commission is called to order. The meeting is being held virtually on Zoom and in person at the Kuyuhale. That's 64-756 Mamalaho'us Highway, Kamua'ala, Hawaii 96743. I'm Colly Watson, Chairman of the Hawaiian Homes Commission. Today's date is Monday, March 17, 2025. Let's see, Leah, will you please call the row?
Commissioner Freitas.
Here.
Commissioner Kalakini.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalepa.
Aye.
Commissioner Koneakua.
Aye.
Commissioner Lasua, Marfil and Namua are excused. Commissioner Nevis.
Aye.
Chair Watson.
Here.
Six members present, we have a quorum.
Yeah, let's see, approval of agenda. Item G3 will be taken out of order and will be first in the informational items section. The commission will recess for lunch at noon. And today's community meeting is at the Kalapa Community Association Center starting at 6:30 PM. And I get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, are there any edits or amendments to the February 18th and 19th, 2025 regular meeting? February 25th and 26th, 2025 public hearings or February 26th, 2025 special meeting? Commissioner Kalakini?
No, no edits or anything, but there were some requests made. I'll follow up with Leah, I just want to go record.
Sure.
From public testimony.
Okay.
Yeah, it was from testimony from Jermaine Myers, Kahau'ani, Mahoi Tioni and Ivalani McBear.
Okay.
I'll follow up with you.
Do you want to put it on the record or does this?
It's in the, it's in the minutes.
Okay, okay.
Just a second. Thank you.
I guess on, anybody else? Okay, I saw that on, I guess item E1 in the minute, page seven. And the, the reference to Kaila'ila water system. It's actually the, yeah, Kaila'ola system, water system. So if you make that change, that'd be good. Any other comments or amendments? If not, can I get a motion to approve with noted changes?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, first up, public testimony on the agenda items. We're going to limit you to three minutes. We do have a long agenda today. You will, if you don't want to testify now, you can testify at the time we take up the agenda item. But here we have Patty Tankaio.
Okay, all right. Geez, sorry about that. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Aloha Chair Watson and Commission members. I'm here today to talk to you as a beneficiary. And I just want to talk about two important issues very quickly. First, I want to talk about the concerns raised about non-benefit, non-beneficiaries that it's coming before you every single month. And going to different state agencies about the Uniform Relocation Act and the Waipou'oli Project on Kauai. I'm speaking to them. I want to remind you that you are speaking before the Hawaiian Homeland's Commission. Their responsibility is to the trust beneficiaries. They're established by federal law in 1921 and reinforced by the 1959 Admissions Act. Their responsibility is us, the endangered people of Hawaii. And we only have a few thousand pure Hawaiians remaining in the world. While I respect your voices and opinions, the commission has already addressed the relocation act. And their staff and their consultants are working on the matter. And this approach is innovative, it's different, but it's getting native Hawaiians onto the land because one size does not fit all. And if DHHL does not purchase this property, this property was going to either be sold at market rent or turned into a vacation rental, eliminating this wonderful opportunity for native Hawaiians to get into affordable homes. Well, okay, one more thing. The relocation act is a solution for the people that are living there. It's not a problem, it's a solution. Sorry, I had to get that off of my chest because for the last year, I've been hearing non-beneficiaries coming up and testifying to you. And I just had to say that. Okay, so the second thing I wanted to, to say is that to get people off of the list, we need more funding. DHHL needs funding. So anybody who wants to be able to do something, please call your senators, your representatives to support HB 606. It's critical. If this bill does not pass, the momentum that we have now will stop because that's the only way we can get people on the land. It's through funding for infrastructure. Thank you very much, Chairman and Commissioners.
Okay, the next testifier, Shauna Kaulukui. Can you come up to the table and please state your name and use the mic? Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Shauna Kaulukui. I currently sit on the Board of Directors for Kalapa Community Association. I am here today to ask you to approve item G1 for the water subsidy for Kauai. Our community is counting on this to, for a temporary financial relief. Thank you.
Great. Oh, that's short and sweet. Thank you. Uh, let's see, anybody else? Not, okay. First agenda item, consent agenda, Juan Garcia.
Good morning, Chair.
Morning.
Members of the commission. It's always good to be before you. Homestead Services Division has 10 consent agenda items for your consideration. I do want to make a correction to a typographical error on D7, page four, item number nine. It indicates that there's no improvements on the lot. However, we, again, we failed to insert that there, there are improvements by way of perimeter fencing and a gate. And I do apologize to Commissioner Nevis. There was some information that should not have been there, which was taken offline on Saturday. Thank you, Leah and the IT team for removing it. But again, my apologies, Commissioner Nevis.
Chair, may I address that, please? So everybody knows my business. Unfortunately, there was an initial comparison statement, the statement that was included in the document. And it just shows you, as a commissioner, I read every page. Unfortunately, I'm a veteran and I put in for a veteran Native American direct loan, which was approved by the Veterans Administration. And that comes to the commission for approval. Unfortunately, my business was put on this document. It's not a quid pro quo. I don't get it, I'm a volunteer. So it's any, any veteran could put in for it, I just want to let you know. So anybody wants to contribute to my house payment, you're welcome to do so. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Any other? Let's see, we do have a public, well, let's get a motion first and then have discussion. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's first start off, any other comments or questions from any of the commissioners?
Chair, just, just a clarification.
Commissioner Nevis.
Juan, you said on, on page four is, is that also, which numbers are you correcting? Just nine or is it eight, nine?
Agenda item D7.
Yes.
Page four.
Yes. Looks like I questioned eight, nine and 10. So is property sold but no improvements? Are the ones that you've corrected that there are improvements?
Okay, item number eight.
Yes.
Is not being sold, it's no on eight.
Yeah, but it says property sold, but there's no improvements.
I'm sorry.
It still should be improvements, correct?
I'm sorry.
A number eight, it says property sold, but it says improvements none.
So you, property sold, but indicates no and amount not applicable at A.
Oh, I see, I see, I'm sorry, I missed that. My correction. And so number nine?
Yes, number nine correction under transferee. Well, again, same section, number nine, property sold is yes. It's been sold for 205,000, but there are improvements. Right below that, it says none. There are perimeter fencing as well as a gate.
And number 10, that's property sold but no amount, so that one's okay.
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, any other questions from the commissioners? If not, we do have some public testimony, Harold Abe.
Good morning, Chairman Watson and all Commissioners. My name is Harold Abe and my wife and I are currently in the process of transfer purchase in a Puhukapua pastoral area. We were informed three weeks ago that there was a problem with my wife's blood quantum of 50%. And my wife has been on this list since she was 21. Now, all of a sudden, there's a, there's a question of her legitimacy to be on that list. Her grandfather and grandmother took her down to Hawaiian homes at the time and got her signed up. Now there seems to be a problem. I don't understand, we don't, my wife and I don't understand. It's been three weeks, we haven't received anything as to what the problem is that we need to correct. According to my wife's documents that she has, she is 50% Hawaiian. In 40 years, all of a sudden, she's not enough Hawaiian. And like I said, I don't have anything that I can come to you as to what specifically is the problem because we haven't received any communications. When we call to ask if anything was heard and we get the, no, nothing yet. And you know, I, right now, I just feel like I'm not really coming to you with any problem except for all of a sudden, my wife is not enough Hawaiian after being on the list for 40 years. I mean, I don't qualify. I have Hawaiian, but I don't qualify enough. Now, growing up, I was under the impression that, geez, once you get on the list, you're the Hawaiian. But now, you know, my wife is being told she's not enough Hawaiian. Her grandfather's not here, her grandmother's not here, her mom just passed away last year and she's not here. Now, I can imagine these people are probably, if they were alive, would probably be upset. My first reaction was to be upset, but that soon overcame by just sadness that my wife is no longer considered enough Hawaiian to be able to purchase land. It's not an award, we had to purchase this. And we came up with the necessary funds scraping up enough money. And now, that's gonna be put in jeopardy by, I don't know who. I don't know why. That all of a sudden, she's not enough Hawaiian, you know, we've brought this to Makai Freitas and he's worked on it and you know, still, it's been three weeks since he checked on it and we still have no answer. I don't know, how does that happen? Does anybody, does anybody know how?
Yeah, as the commission has had been advised previously and as a matter of fact, the past few months, Homestead Services Division continues to review, um, the, at one point, there were, were about a thousand, um, applicants whose native Hawaiian blood quantum has been pending for a number of years. The department has sent correspondence, tried to make contact with these individuals. In fact, um, if you look at item D two, uh, there's more than a dozen individuals whose application date is twenty plus years, um, but we're coming before you for your approval, uh, to accept them as certified. So there are unfortunately through the review of these pending applicants, um, whose native Hawaiian blood quantum have been deemed to be less than fifty. The department, as you've been advised previously, the department intends to come before you, uh, asking you to cancel those applicants whose N H Q have been deemed to be fifty percent. Now, those individuals would then have an opportunity to request for a contested case hearing to address that very issue. Um, but that will take place once the commission takes action on, um, changing the status of that applicant to pending to one that does not qualify. Uh, but I do apologize, Mr. Abe, if you have not been contacted. Um, I will reach out and with staff and get specific information on that, but I think that would be the, the route that we would be moving towards. If your wife's lease or application is in fact deemed, uh, to be one of those that do not qualify, she will have the due process of requesting for that contested case hearing.
So it's taken forty years to discover that she's no longer?
It, it may have taken that long, um, but if you're telling me that she's never received any type of letters or contact, um, that should not have been the case, but we can take a look at that, sit down and take a look, in fact, we may not have had, um, a current mailing address or what have you. Again, I don't know what the specific situation is, but I can speak with you after this.
Cause I, I know that for the last four years, going on five years, we've, we've changed our address to our Waimea address. She changed it from Oahu to Big Island. And we've never received any correspondence as to her not being enough Hawaiian to qualify. So five years of, now we're, we're up and now we're being deemed not being qualified. That's, that's not, is that acceptable with the commission? With, is that what, what, uh, this was, the Department of Hawaiian Homeland was made for? To discount Hawaiians?
No, uh, Mr. Abe, the, uh, you know, we're kinda controlled by the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act, the fifty percent minimum, uh, blood quantum requirement that we, we can't deviate from. Yeah, I can understand your frustration, um, but we really don't have a choice. But at the same time, there is a process where if you feel, you and your wife feel strongly that no, she is qualified, then you will have an opportunity to, uh, you know, present your evidence and then the commission will consider that, uh, it'll probably go through a hearings officer that will make a recommendation. So there is a process where if you along with the others of the thousand pending applications that are now being reviewed, uh, and there are others besides your wife that have been deemed not to be qualified. So they also have opportunities to go through a contested case hearing, then a resolution by the decision of the commission. But again, we're kinda guided and mandated to follow the blood quantum requirement. I don't personally agree with it, but that is the law. Uh, we are in the process of trying to reduce, uh, we've already reduced the successors to twenty five percent. There is a, a bill in Congress to reduce it even to one thirty second. But again, the initial requirement is fifty percent, so.
Okay, um, you know, and, uh, my thing is also to stress that it's taken three weeks. That's three weeks of not of an unknown.
Sure.
You know, it's like at this rate, at three weeks, next week will be four weeks and we get started on whatever. And then takes another four weeks at this rate, shoot, it might be, you know, another, another forty years. You know, that's just my feeling on, on.
Yeah, we apologize for that.
You know, it's not like, you know, it could be, it's probably less than that, but you know, that's just the way that we feel.
So Mr. Abe, we, um, just af- after you get seated, uh, meet with Juan and we'll get you the information.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, uh, it's been moved in second and, uh, with amendments, which includes, uh, item D seven, numbers nine, there are improvements. And then, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried.
Chair, can I, can I just make a comment on, uh, the, the, the submittal you were talking about is actually D five is the, uh, is the approval application, qualified applications. And, and again, I commend the department for doing the additional work to get some of these that have been pending. If you look under Papa Clay of the Ho- Mr. Hope P. We finally have approved his, his application nineteen forty seven, I was born in nineteen forty seven. And there's a lot of reasons, folks, why people are pending, either we don't have the proper documents. So in twenty twenty, as the commission, we put together a P I G, a permitted interaction group to look at all these issues and give direction to the department on this is what you need. So going through that, and there was like Juan said, a thousand people out there, besides all the other stuff they're doing, they really put a lot of effort in to try to get these resolved. And Mr. Abe, I'm sure we'll look, do the best we can to get yours resolved. And if it's not resolved, that's why we have the contested case. But the department's gotta be committed, I mean, there's dates in here, nineteen fifty seven, nineteen sixty two, they're finally getting okay. It, it's, it's a long process, we wanna make sure it's right. So we put the right people, you know, we utilize the act to make sure that we're putting our right people on the land. And we do understand that sometimes it takes a long time, but we're working on, thank you, Chair.
Anyhow, if I may add without, um, wasting additional time, i- it's the efforts of the staff. Additional documents are required and it's those situations where we're waiting for those documents directly from the beneficiaries and sometimes it takes time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is D, D twelve, approval to amend the lease commencement date of the Puhu Kapua pastoral lease, leases awarded in nineteen ninety. Uh, Juan Garcia.
Again, this, if the commission may recall, uh, this came before you, um, nearly a year ago, um, I'm gonna call up Jim Dupont, who is the district operations manager, who will present this submittal to you.
Hello and good morning Commissioners.
Hello.
This item was on last year's agenda and it was deferred and.
Jim, can you talk on the mic?
Yes, move, thanks. And as the submittal indicates, um, Makai Freitas, the West Hawaii Commissioner and myself met with the county departments of planning, public works and the police and fire department. And one of the questions had to do with the access roads and the ability of the county to respond to emergencies. And at the meeting that we had with them, both the police and fire department stated that they have responded to emergencies and will continue to respond to emergencies and that the roads are, you know, in, in their opinion, accessible to their staff and equipment. And I think that was one of the, uh, questions that we wanted to clarify. Um, the other question had to do with subdivision approval and whether or not via that process the roads would be addressed as far as a standard that would be acceptable to the county. And when we discussed the agricultural subdivision approval process, the county indicated that even if the department went through that process, the road still would not be up to a standard that is dedicable to the county. And so, um, their basic requirement for an ag standard road is, is twenty foot wide and a base course, um, with gravel material. So again, that was a, another, um, question, whether or not the subdivision process would address the conditions and standards for the existing roads in Puhu Kapua. So we were able to, you know, understand that from the early part of the department's awarding of pastoral lots in nineteen fifty two up until the nineteen ninety awards, that all of the pastoral lots were accepted by the county via lots of record and not through a subdivision process. So, um, if you drive through Ni'ne Kamoku and Puhu Kapua, you understand the limitations of those access roads. But in all of those areas, in emergency situations, the county will respond. And, and so, you know, what happened back in the fifties, uh, up until today, some of the homesteads, while not going through a subdivision process, they do have access to county potable water system. Um, that's one of the needs of Puhu Kapua would be a potable system. So what we have in place right now is not considered a potable water system. Uh, it's more tailored towards ag use for irrigation, not irrigation, but for, um, livestock use. The police department and the fire department requested that the department consider physical addresses to each of the homestead lots awarded in nineteen ninety. And from the planning department perspective, they would just request a letter from the department asking that the planning department assign physical addresses. So that discussion is ongoing. And from their point of view, if they receive an emergency call and they know the physical address where the resident is or where the accident is, then it makes it much easier for them to find either the caller and or the incident. And so from a safety standpoint, that's one of the requests that the county has made is, is to get physical addresses assigned to all of the Puhu Kapua lots that were awarded in nineteen ninety. Some of the lots already have physical addresses. Uh, when this was approved by the county in two thousand and nine, they created new plat maps. From those plat maps, each of the lots, the one hundred and eighty six lots that were awarded, each of those would have a physical address. The other part to this discussion has to do with the lease commencement date and that being the last piece of information that the county rural property tax would need where the department could report the name of the lessee and any lease information for the county purposes. Once the lease commencement date is determined, each new lease receives a seven year rural property tax exemption. So basically, the existing leases that were awarded in nineteen ninety have a February first of nineteen ninety one as the existing lease commencement date. So this submittal is, is proposing a June first twenty twenty five commencement date and that date is, is not set in concrete. But again, once that date is approved by the commission, it would allow the department to complete the route slip to the county so that the county understands who the lessee is and what their contact information is. And the critical piece of information is the physical address to that property.
Just to add to that, um, should the commission approve this proposed commencement date, there are a number of lessees willing and able to occupy the lot and make improvements. But currently, they aren't unable to do so because there's no information that county has that ties them to that assigned T M K. So with this proposal to approve and accept the commencement date, will allow those that have been waiting for a number of years to actually occupy and make use of that lot with the necessary improvements that they're requiring.
Commissioner Freitas?
Yeah, just to add a little bit to this dialogue discussion, to first of all, touch on the, the meeting we had, I wanna say, last year. There were, there are a few things that we were tasked to do prior to reconvening and having this discussion and this submittal. There were topics of discussion that Jim and I had with the head of the Department of Public Works as well as the first responders. Neo Azavito, uh, basically committed to maintain the roads at Puhu Kapua by putting a layer of coal plane down and also maintaining the edges where there's a lot of runoff and which, which also accelerates the erosion process on those roads. We also discussed the ability to widen the roads where we can widen them. My frustration went up a little bit because there's still a little bit of lack of communication between what roads are accessible and what roads are not accessible. The fire department did say everything's accessible. That dialogue, that statement was contradicted by lessees that have been there for a very long time. I had the chance to speak with Senator Richards last week in his office and this topic came up, Katie, we're, we're also there. He feels that some of those roads are not accessible. But he may, what he talked about is the weight of the machines, the, the weight of the trucks compared to the current material. That's what calls, which, which drastically causes the inaccessibility. With the coal plane being layered down, it'll help drastically help accessibility for our first responders to get where they have to get. I know there's questions about the commencement date, you know, when do we start, when does a ninety nine year clock start? I know Auntie Kanani has voiced her opinions, uh, on what she feels. Uh, there's a lot of people in this room I know have. There's a lot of people in this room I know have questions. So like, I'd like everybody to have the chance to answer, to ask questions and get the answers they're looking for. I left that meeting last week with understanding that the most of the people in that room though realize it's not perfect. And I don't want to use the word compromise because compromise means that our beneficiaries are accepting less than they deserve. But I was under the impression that we we acknowledged there's issues. But we also acknowledge the fact that moving forward with this commencement date now will give the beneficiaries a chance to pull out loans, to build structures, and to also get the different types of insurances that are needed in that area, the needed period. But especially in that area, we are flooding as well as fire fire issues. Now, as time goes on, I'm sure the word spread about the community. And I'm sure there's a lot more questions that need to be answered here today, and that's why we're here. This is the venue to answer questions. So I'm gonna take a step back and let you folks ask questions and hopefully we can answer them.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Kali Kini?
I have a question. You know, if this, I understand how important it is to have an address, especially for emergency responders responding to emergencies, but I I think too is the, should this start June twenty twenty five, the issue becomes road maintenance. Will the county be handling that?
No, it still would be with the department. The county is is willing to sit down and work with the department to determine exactly where they can help support the department. But ultimately, the road maintenance is with the department.
And West Hawaii District Office has been in the past and continue to maintain the roads.
But it's
Chair, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah, certainly back to dialogue we had with Neil Azavito, he seemed committed to working with land management as well as our department and the beneficiaries on the maintenance of the roads.
I I think Kali Kini was next, and then we'll go to Commissioner Nevis.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so Jim, yeah, so looking forward to any testimony we hear. And what I wanted to ask, with respect to the county, they okay with the commencement date of twenty twenty five?
The county really doesn't have a say about yea or no. It's up to the department through the commission to set that commencement date. So their only interest again is having all of the information that they need for each lot and each lessee. And again, being able to assign those physical addresses. And, you know, in the submittal, it recognizes that, you know, the residents or the the lessees are in disagreement with the department that the roads are safe. And again, there are certain sections that would require some type of signage and or widening and putting material down. And that is tied into the right amount of funding. You know, if the department is going to be working with the county, you know, one of the items is the purchase of materials. If the county offers manpower and equipment to begin to, you know, make those improvements that the fire department is asking in relation to getting to sources of water to fight the wildfires. So yes, I mean, I understand there's certain areas of Pukapu and that road system that are, you know, unsafe just because of the terrain. And, you know, how much time and effort is it going to take to bring the right level or bring it to a standard that's acceptable to the county so that the department can turn it over to them? You know, that's a different discussion and a longer term plan and budgeting for all of those needs.
Commissioner Nevis?
Yes, I I think he sort of hit the point that I was gonna take is make sure we have enough funding as we move forward. And I remember driving those roads last year. And there are some areas where you're gonna have to bring in a contractor to get a lot of stuff done, some heavy work. So I just want to make sure we have the proper funding for the roads so we can get them up standard.
Commissioner In terms of of funding, what do you think that that number is? Any idea?
In relation to a subdivision approval, one of the items is basically a county standard water system, which is a potable water system. So as an example, when the department considered a water system, a county standard system at that time was estimated at seventy million dollars. And so, you know, if this was proposed in twenty thirteen, you know, I don't know what that number would be in twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six going forward. So again, the water system is one part of that. Roads, water, electricity. So, you know, I don't have a number, but it's it's large.
Any other questions coming? So let me, let me ask you, if we were to apply that June first twenty twenty five, the seven year exemption would start from that point?
Yes.
That would be as to the property taxes. Then after that seven year period, what would the homesteader be charged?
I received a note that certain council members are proposing that that tax be no more than two hundred dollars a year. But again, you have to work through the the council process. You know, I appreciate the fact that certain council members are thinking about the benefits to the, you know, homesteaders. But again, it's it's a long way from being decided. So typically, at this point, the minimum property tax is one hundred dollars a year or fifty dollars per six months process. The other part to that equation, which again, the council members that have proposed the taxes, the county can assess the value of the improvements on the homestead. And again, this this assumes that there was a building permit and the individual went through that process. So, you know, what that number would be is going to depend on the value that is assessed by the county.
Okay, so the property itself is a hundred bucks a year, improvements, if there are any. If then you do the assessment based on what the county sets.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we have some testimony. We got quite a bit. So let's start with Chris Wan. Oh, Hi Kina, Hi Widow also.
Hello, Chairman Watson and Commissioners. Mahalo for having us. My name is Kahiki Nakai Widow. I'm the manager for Hui Aloha Pukapu. I'm here with our board president, Chris Wan. And Hui Aloha Pukapu was, is a five oh one C three nonprofit homestead association that was formed in response to the Mana Road wildfires in twenty twenty one. We look to advocate and support our community up in the pastoral lots in Pukapu. And we're here today to show a strong opposition to agenda item D twelve. We submitted a formal letter from the board, and you should have that. So we're gonna try to summarize, because I know it's kind of a long letter. And we're coming in the position on not just the principle of this request, but the process that that the department went through to put this on the agenda. And that's a big deal for us because we're finding that there has been this culture of of I would say deceit and and noncommunication and and engagement with the community. So if you don't mind, we're gonna start. So in May twenty twenty four, at the commission ma- meeting, when they put this on the agenda, and when I say they, I say Jim Dupont, the commission make clear directives when you deferred it. And you said you wanted to see, get clarity from the county departments, want to make sure that we address the community concerns and ensure that there's direct engagement with our homestead community in this process. So from May to February, May twenty twenty four to February twenty twenty five, there was no contact to the community about any efforts from this this directive. So May twenty twenty four to February twenty twenty five. Okay, so let me back up a little bit. October twenty twenty four, Hilo Commission meeting, one of our directors gets to speak with Mr. Juan Garcia, and he acknowledges that there's not, there's a miscommunication, there isn't communication between the department and the community, and this needs to happen. And what that includes is that they need to be part of the process and the conversations with the county. Because I was a director, remember? And Commissioner Freitas spoke up and said, yes, I agree. I feel like I didn't have all the information. And so let's defer this and let's let's engage the community and let's talk to the county departments and make sure the community is part of this conversation. Okay? So it's reacknowledged by Mr. Garcia in October twenty twenty four. We hear nothing. So we follow up in December. Hey, Juan, just checking in. I know you said you wanted a meeting with the community members where we could speak with the county departments of what our concerns are. And I'm not gonna speak too much to our concerns because I know there's people here that's gonna share why we oppose this approval. We get a, we get an email response from Juan saying, spoke to Jim Dupont, he's working with Chairman Watson, who's gonna, and they're gonna be working with Mary Alameda to deal with this issue. And when we get information, we will update you. And that was December twenty twenty four. The first inkling that anything is happening is we get a phone call from Jim February thirteenth. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna be very specific on dates because I want you to understand. Nothing happened from May twenty twenty four until February thirteenth for us. Get a phone call from Jim Dupont saying, hey, I'm supposed to meet with the fire department to do a tour of the access road so we can, they can assess whether they can have access, whether they can respond to emergencies up there. My my schedule is conflicting with the fire inspector that was assigned to do this. Anyway, you or somebody from your board can attend this meeting. That's not our kuliana, in a sense, as much as we want to be part of it, but we said yes because had we not, would we have been invited to this? I don't think so. So this was our opportunity to be there firsthand. So cod contacted my board. Chris was able to move his his work schedule around and meet eight thirty in the morning, eight thirty, the next day on the fourteenth with Inspector Kawasaki. Took him for a tour. Awesome. So that's our first time. We're like, okay, they're contacting the county. Great. I hope we hear more from them. So the next time I see Jim, I run into Jim, Mr. Dupont at the Hawaii Wildfire Summit. And he happens to tell me, oh, by the way, and this is on the twenty seventh, February twenty seventh, I'm having a meet, an update meeting on March eleventh to inform the community of the progress we're making based on the directives from May twenty twenty four. An update meeting about the contact we've made with the county. So I'm with another director at this conference, and we're thinking, how come we weren't included in these conversations with, because he told me, right, planning, public works, police department? Because if I can recall, because I attended virtually this meeting, we were supposed to be part of that conversation, give us an opportunity to ask the questions that concerns us because the department's not able to answer these questions. But, okay, I reminded, hey, February ends tomorrow on the twenty eighth. You're less two, less than two weeks away is this planned update meeting on the eleventh. But let me know so we can update the community, give them as much notice, right? From what I understand, they send postcards out, gives the community one week notice that we're having this update meeting. Chris and I meet with Jim on the fifth, and this is important to us. On the fifth, so he can let us know kind of topics of what we're gonna talk about in the meeting, and he can get a report back from Chris on what that tour was with the department to validate some of the, I'm sure he had a conversation with the fire department, but also just to to get Chris's sort of report or what he, what he, what he got from that tour. And in this meeting, a lot of the same information, RMTL twenty twelve report, what we should do with the roads, the same thing that they've been repeating repeatedly reporting on for the past twelve years. We bring up, so and we talk about solutions like, okay, we understand the department's not gonna spend seventy million dollars on paving our roads. We live in a rural community. It's not what we're asking for. That wasn't a concern. But what is tangible solutions? We talked a little bit, but but what we asked is, okay, before you put this in for approval for commencement, can you let the community come together after our meeting on the eleventh? Because you're gonna give us all this information and we've got something to work with. And then we can work with the department to come up with, help with solutions. Maybe we partner as a nonprofit. What are individuals able to do? And he's like, well, well, first, he said, this isn't about commencement. I did not bring up commencement. This has nothing to do with commencement, and I am quoting him. At this point, has not told us it has been put on the agenda. We have no idea. May, March fifth, commission meetings on the seventeenth. We have no idea. It's been submitted for for commission approval. It's not about commencement. Okay, well, before you choose to do that, can you give us time? He's like, why? At some point, I have to. I'm thinking maybe June. Okay. I'm gonna try to get a community meeting together by April second. And side note, I've been tasked by my board to create a road committee. So I said, perfect timing. This is a time where I can get the community together and let's talk about what you're offering, what your conversations were with the committee. I mean, the first question was, why weren't we included in these conversations? But it happened, right? And so again, we come May eleventh, I mean, sorry, I keep saying May, March eleventh, which is three business days later. We have this update meeting, the very small group of us, because again, one week notice for this update meeting. An hour and a half, we met. Not once a Commissioner Freitas or Jim Dupont mentioned to us that this agenda, that this was on the agenda, that they put in a request for approval for the commencement date. This would have changed the whole conversation, both on my meeting on the fifth, sorry, our meeting on the fifth and the update meeting on the eleventh. The conversation wouldn't have been so much about how are we gonna work together? Let's work together, come up with priorities that are tangible for the for the for the department. Like you say, what can we afford? What kind of budget do we have? We don't have seventy million. We get it. But we still deserve to understand what the county departments are seeing, how that affects us, especially for those of us who live up there. And mind you, we understand what commencement brings, especially for people who are not there yet. We understand, but there's still so many questions. We have preexisting structures. We have people who have followed their lease agreement, moved up there, submitted their plans, got denied, but got approved by the planning department at Hawaiian Homes. Did everything we're supposed to be doing, and it's still getting denied. What happens to us who's up there? And we're preexisting structures. You read the letter from the planning department. Oh, it can be accepted, but can we still get insurance? Are we gonna get, are we gonna have to pay preexisting, what is that called? Preexisting fees, as built fees? Are we gonna be able to get equity and insurance on our property? They can't answer those questions. We deserve to know the answers to these questions. We want commencement, but at what? Like, at what expense, right? Like, there are issues with the roads. Let's, let's touch on it. Let's, let's touch on it. Anyway, I'm moving away from what we're really talking about. So if you can get my timeline, still, hour and a half, March eleventh. No, nothing is mentioned, but this is an agenda item. We get an email from Auntie Kanani Thursday, the thirteenth, saying, did you see the agenda? I mean, you're talking about blatant lies.
Uh, excuse me, excuse me, um, let me ask you some things. Um, you don't have any problems with uh, getting the physical addresses, huh?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so that part, you don't have a problem with the, working with the county and coal planning, the existing roads?
And let me bring that up. That was not mentioned.
That's, that's my question, do you not have a problem with that?
Not at all, no.
Okay, what about the uh, the seven-year exemption? You don't have a problem with that, do you?
I, I mean, I can only speak personally, but I, I think there are, I think as a, as a, as a, I think there's been a I don't know that everybody in the community does agree with it. I think many homesteaders would say we shouldn't have to pay any property taxes, but yeah, we understand this seven-year exemption, yes.
But uh, so you don't have any problem with the um, I guess the fire department and the police department being able to respond in a timely manner, should you have the physical address assigned, as well as the uh, different parties to be able to identify where to go? You don't have a problem with that, do you?
With that, no, but there are issues, if you wanna hear.
Okay, well, I, I don't want you calling people liars, okay? Please uh, speak at a level that we can all appreciate.
No, I, and I understand that, but what I'm trying to show is that there's been this culture of, of miscommunication and misinformation.
Okay, well, we're trying to, I understand, you know, I've looked at your timeline, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I'm also, I think all of us are looking for solutions, moving forward, and that's what we're talking about now, okay? We're talking about solutions. So you have anything to add to that later?
We have offered at that meeting, we said, as a Hui, we wanna partner with the department.
Let's work together.
Yeah, and I said, let's make a committee. Absolutely, what we're just trying to show is they, they, they weren't honest, it didn't come to us and say, hey, by the way.
Let's work together, okay, Chris?
Yeah.
Let's move.
I would love that.
Okay, we have other people that need to testify. So why don't you summarize? I'll give you a few minutes to summarize.
Yeah, we oppose this agenda item. And um, and we hope that you, at, at least defer it, at least defer it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next, uh, would you like to say a few words? Good.
Oh, we just wanna add one more thing that Jim forgot to mention, that uh, with the fire department, we have fire um, tanks up there in Pukapu. But the fire department said our tanks are useless, they're not gonna use it.
Let's work on that, get better tanks, Commissioner.
Okay, first of all, I, I did mention the coal plane in the meeting. I apologize, but I was probably understanding that you guys already knew that it was an agenda, my fault for not. I know we talked to a coal plane, I spoke with, with Kahu over there about the coal plane, about the coal plane, right? Okay, thank you. For the fire issues, in the meeting, I also met with the, oh, okay, sorry, the meeting we had here, I know I brought up the fact about the adapters on the fire tanks. I brought that up, and I brought up that Co- that Chief Todd realizes there's problems with some of the older tanks, and the adapters or the fittings that are on the tanks that are up in Pukapu. And his recommendation was to use some kind of a, a solar-powered.
They wanna put in pumps.
So, some kind of.
The fire department cannot suck out of the tanks, cause there's gravity.
Yeah, so all he told us, all he told us was that certain, some, some type of a solar-powered pump contraption, I'm not a, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to reiterate what he said. I could be wrong, that's why I was hoping somebody could be here today. To put this device there, it'll help with the, with, with the feed of the water to the particular tank, because of the problems with the adapters, right? Okay. So that is something.
There's gravity feed, and their trucks are not capable of.
But with this, with this particular mechanism, if it's solar-powered, it helps with the feed of water.
That's what they, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, they also talk about uh, each homestead have a separate storage stang- uh, tank, strictly for firefighting purposes.
Yeah.
So, you know, let's go look at that, let's try to figure out how to help you guys get all these things in place. But more importantly, let's move forward, okay? Okay, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next uh, testifier, uh, Penny, yeah, Penny Kaai.
Aloha, Commissioner, uh, Penny Kaai, and I'm a homesteader of it, Pukapu, at the farm lot, um. Uh, I'm with, I'm actually a board member on Hui Aloha Pukapu, I'm also a board member on Waimea Nui Homestead Association. But I'm speaking as, in my personal capacity as a homesteader, yeah? And um, there's so much holes in this um, commencement amendment commencement date um, to proceed right now, because we really don't know, does it solve the issues that you want it to solve, does it solve the issues they want it to solve, we want it to solve, right? Like, for instance, do we know that if we do commence, all our, the leases able to get financed? Does it, does anybody know? Are, are they allowed to get financing once we commence? And I, and, and that's, and that's a valid question. For, for those of us who have homes up there, what's the process for as-built structures? Am I gonna have to get, you know, how much am I gonna have to pay, et cetera, et cetera? And I, and I know Jim's uh, you know, as, and, and I appreciate Jim, I appreciate everybody's help in this, because whether or not we're gonna have to go through this together and not around each other, basically what is, this is gonna happen. And so, you know, there's so much questions in this, and nobody really has any definite answers to any of this. So why can't we come together and maybe set up um, beneficiary consultation on this issue specifically? And, you know, have that, have a year to come back to you guys and say, this is what we feel should happen, this is what we can do, and, and actually form, formulate a strategic plan to move forward together in the community. You know, that's the only way I can see um, this really working out. And, and in terms of taxes, I mean, once you commence, this really has to do with county taxes. Um, how, how much are those taxes gonna be for us up there? And who's gonna, who is going to make that determination? Is it the county? But the county, we're, we're, we're totally unique situation, where we don't have any autonomy to the county right now. You know, which, which, which brings me back, and, and, and I'm a producer, I, I grow flowers up there, and we have a farm. Which brings me back to the, the idea of, you know, when, what was the best time to plant a tree, right? Everybody's gonna say it's fifty years ago, for, for the best time for us to plant a tree was seventy years ago, at the nineteen fifty um, pastoral subdivision that we didn't, we didn't, we didn't have a planning department. Hawaiian Homes still didn't develop that, the Department of Hawaiian Homes. So really, that was the best time for us to de- to develop a planning department. The second best time to develop the planning department was in nineteen ninety-one, when we did the accelerated lots. Is the second best time we should have planned, we should have created a planning department. The, the next best time to do the planning department for the department is, is right now. So we, as beneficiaries, as homesteaders, can get real answers from our department. The county is not our department right now, and Jim said it himself, the county's not gonna go up there and fix the roads. We don't have any benefit from the county right now as homesteaders up there. So when you commence, why are we paying county taxes for zero benefits? Anyway, so which brings me to permitting, and then the roads, um, the roads right now, I know everybody's been sitting here, we've been seeing these guys pump water into the trucks, the, the D H A truck, a truck, right, truck was out there, there's another homesteader right now pumping into his truck right now. And this is his second time he's been here, right here. So his truck and trailer probably has a capacity of around maybe five thousand pounds with the water he's putting in there. His truck weighs another ton, so let's just say altogether five tons. Can our roads, do our roads in Pukapu have the capacity to hold that kind of tonnage on, on our, on our, on our roads? And not only that, the homestead is a hundred and eighty-four leases. Right now, we're probably at capacity of about twenty to twenty-five percent of that in terms of traffic. So what happens in the next ten years when we have five times more traffic, ten times, a hundred times more traffic? You know, what are, what's gonna happen to our roads now? They're already unsafe, they're already needs maintenance twice, three times a week. Now we're talking about having more people up there deserving it, I mean, not, and we're not talking cars, we're not talking light-duty trucks, we're talking truck and trailers, we're talking heavy tonnage to a road that's not really built to handle that capacity. And our water system is actually this, in the same way. Yeah, so, you know, we wanna work together at, it, as our associations. We wanna work with the department, we wanna, we wanna have a clear, transparent relationship. Right? And the only way that's done is if, you know, we, we can all agree to get on that same page, right? To, to be clear and transparent. Yeah, and we're, we're not pointing fingers, but any questions? And I live up there, so you guys can ask me any question you want.
Well, it's, it's not really a question, um, I guess it's the uh, reality of the situation. I mean, obviously, that area uh, needs a lot of improvements.
Yeah.
Uh, but there's some very immediate things that have to be addressed, especially after the experience you guys have gone through with the fires, which is a safety of our beneficiaries. So in talking with the different entities responsible for that, these county entities that do respond, if the appropriate information is provided, I'm sure all of us, including yourselves, would uh, wanna facilitate that by doing whatever is needed and requested by the different uh, entities involved. So you don't have a problem with that, do you?
No, absolutely not, and I, and I really wanna encourage more of that conversation, because you know, our community is really spread out.
Yeah.
And, and some people might not have access to uh, online. I, I, as you know, we don't even have the broadband, because um, what do you call, Sandwich House is not up there. So people who have internet up there are paying Starlink fees. You know, and not everybody can afford Starlink up there right now. So the more conversation we have in this type of forum, the more times we can assemble about it, I think the better for, the better we are to make informed decisions, right? And that's what we wanna do, and basically, that's, that's really our, our ask.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Not, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next uh, testifier, Kanani Apunai.
Well, good morning.
Morning.
Everyone, nice to see you here in Waimea. Okay, I have my letter there. I testified to defer action on the recommended motion and action. Before the Hawaiian Homes Commission, with the submission of West Hawaii District Office and D H H L Homestead Services Division can consider any action on lease commencement date on behalf of the leases. The definition thereof shall be discussed and agreed upon. Number one, what is the definition of lease commencement date? Two, how does it relate to the date leases execute a lease agreement? Where is the county's requirement regarding commencement date? I believe the lease commencement date is the date we execute our lease agreement or contract, and should have nothing to do with county subdivision approval, which does not exist, nor was even applied for. I believe the county could provide a conditional approval for non-dedicated roads and water system, where D H H L is responsible for road maintenance and the non-portable water system now in place. After that date, the seven-year real property tax exemption should then begin. I do believe that we should post, I do believe that we should post our addresses out front for emergency response. I did, I, I, uh, one day I was driving up there and uh, E M S was looking for someone. But confidentiality, I couldn't, they couldn't tell me who they wanted to see, so I could, who, where they wanted to go, so I could at least direct them. But it, it isn't, isn't important, we should post our addresses. But uh, lease commencement date is a big zero. Unless it is defined and we agree upon it. So that's my thoughts. Any question? Any comment?
So you'd rather have the lease commencement date in ninety-one or in twenty-five?
We will have a lease commencement date, which has to be defined and agreed upon. And uh, that has nothing, that's, I don't think that has anything to do with any type of subdivision approval. Or when we start the seven years. If we're supposed, if everything was done properly, then it would, then, then the, the system of seven-year property tax exemption would start, you know, right after we got up there. There wasn't even an application for subdivision approval. What is the county gonna do? Nineteen ninety-one, we get our leases, two thousand and nine, the, the department submits the plan, the subdivision plan that was already, he talks about um, roads of of record, what, what of record it's talked about. But anyway, um, we need a discussion on what is the lease commencement date. Until then, there has to be deferral of action of D twelve.
Thank you, uh. Okay, next uh, testifier, Billy Kaili Mai.
Good morning, thank you to the commission.
Good morning.
I am a leasee lot twenty-eight in Pukapu Pastoral. I don't know how accurate I am, but I think I'm one of the original homes up there. My home was stamped by our architect, we built it through a licensed contractor, we do have insurance, fire, and hurricane, and we did get financing, which is kinda interesting for a lot of people to hear. So um, let me back up a little, I wanna say to um, Kai Kina and Hui Aloha Pukapu, they, you are doing such a great job up there. Please keep doing what you're doing and appreciate her passion. They are probably, you know, one of the groups that um, our commission wants to work with. In spite of our miscommunication or, you know, oversight and communicating some things, I agree with them, there is some frustration and communication, which can always get better, right? We just keep working. I am probably in somewhat favor of the commencement date with conditions, uh, it would allow homeowners to um, to get their insurances, they would be legitimized by the county. If you go into the county, I'm, I'm also, I'm bivocational, I'm a Kahuipa on the, the weekends, but I'm a general contractor on the weekdays. I am the owner and RME of Midpac Services LLC, so we work with Epic all the time. And it's so difficult uh, to get your permits, even if you're, you know, in a fee simple area. But if you're up at Pukapu, it's like, almost impossible. Commencing a commencement date, whatever that looks like, conditional, trying to figure out our roadways and whatnot, would be helpful in that, I believe, for homeowners, despite the uphill battle with roads and everything else, it would give them the opportunity to get insurances, to get, to be tied with the tax department, to put their name with a T M K. And the county would recognize them, they could get their permits. Um, they could build, they could, and I see the small fee, the small tax fee, is that we could then go to the county and say, look, we're taxpayers. I understand everybody doesn't have the same budget as I do or you do. But I see it as a positive direction forward. Um, I still think that there needs to be a lot of communication with uh, Mr. Dupont, Mackay Freitas, um, there's a lot of work that needs to be done at roadways, um, I'm, uh, let me see what else. My wife and I feel for the people up there, we understand their, their challenges, uh, we have been there for a while. Uh, we have been there for a while, so whenever I see a new family up there trying to build, you, you kind of feel for them. And so, anyway, that's my manao. If you have any questions, building-wise, I could answer them.
Yeah, I had a question on uh, so you've built, uh, you have a, a home there?
I have originally in uh, I think when, when the lots were awarded, it was my grandfather's, Willie Canino. So I'm his successor. And we built almost immediately after, got approval from the DHHL, but it was conditional upon getting permits. Uh, it was conditional that when they, they, the permitting process is allowed, we'd have to go in. And ever since then, it has not been a complete process. For example, the semantics are, the department will tell you, you can get a permit. Well, the county will recognize you, give you a permit, but they won't final that. They won't final that, they won't, they won't finish what they're doing because there's still this ha-ha-ha between them and, you know, DHHL and you. So you um, so we do have structures up there, it was built to code, you know, partly because I'm a contractor and it was stamped by a civil engineer. And it, it has, we don't have a cesspool, we have a septic system, which the county is going to require everybody to upgrade to that, so.
So right now, you weren't able to get a permit because there is no process in place?
I have gone back a few times, my wife has helped me, she works with Epic. She does a lot of her online management with Epic, that's our County of Hawaii building system. Um, it's an electronic, Epic Electronic Processing, something, but we worked through the language and they're not doing finals because we don't have a TMK. Well, we technically, we do, there is a TMK allotted to that area, but it's not linked to Billy Kailemai. So without the commencement, that won't happen. If it, if there is a commencement, then that may happen. However, again, I understand with what Antikani saying and Kay Kina, that there's a lot of loose ends that need to be tied up. So there's concern with the lessees, what does that mean for us on the other end?
Okay, thank you very much. Any question, uh Commissioner Freitas?
Uh, that's much a question, just, well, thank you, brother from Manau, appreciate it. Uh, just how do we move forward? What do we do? Uh, there's a lot of valid points, a lot of holes, like you said, lack of communication. You know, especially the pre-existing structures, how are they affected by this? But the need to move forward for those who want to get insurances and want to get loans and want to be able to raise their families or, how do we realistically move forward in this process? How do we have a, yes, like we talked about earlier, we cannot, we cannot have, kind of, actually like Antika said, you cannot have, we don't have seventy million dollars in bank, but what are realistic? What's a realistic strategy to move forward on this thing? I mean, asking everyone still.
I like the idea of, if, I like the idea of something conditional, if, if there was something in our lease that it would, it would have some language that addressed roads. I think it would be a win-win for everyone. Still think the overwhelming consensus, at least from the trades, from, if there is no commencement, the lessees could stand to lose a lot. And if that means that the commission has to approve it for it to go to the county, then we could meet with our new, you know, Mr. Houston, who's our new council member, and maybe we could meet with uh our senators and say, because I believe the county planner's letter on that, the language was, the council would have to sign off on that. So if the commission says, great, go ahead, they still have to accept it. So we could still go to Mr. Houston and say, hey, drive up here and look at our roads, give us a few dollars.
Right.
And I, I think Hui Aloha Pukapu is in the place to do that because they have their five oh one C three, they have already received grants. And, and so you're in a difficult position because you, you know, we're, we're here going, ah, treat us right. But maybe the commencement is a big step forward.
So just a quick.
Can I, can I ask, ask, ask that question? Um, I think what we need to do, and I know we're all saying it, and I don't know if it's really driving home is we still need more information. We still need more information on if we do this, what's going to happen to this? And we don't have those answers. So until we get those answers, we can make informed decisions on where, how to go forward. So like I said, maybe an option is to um, to do a beneficiary consultation with all the lessees up there before we move on passing this item. Because we don't have all the information, you don't, you don't, we all don't in this room have all the information. And whatever that looks like, we can all come to the table and then we can all hash those details out with full knowledge of what's happening. That's my suggestion, really, and that's what really we have been suggesting for a long time.
Okay, okay, so the understanding that the roads aren't going to be perfect, we have to, I don't use a compromise, but the biggest thing is what's going to happen to those existing structures, existing lessees that have already have structures up there? What's going to happen once this thing kicks off? That's a big question.
Correct, what, what happens if it does kick off and we do get financing? What's going to happen to our homes already up there, right? Um, and are we, are we even going to get financing? Because like I did Kanani said, we aren't, we haven't even gone for a subdivision approval. So we're jumping from a subdivision approval that hasn't even happened in the fifties to now try to commence something of subdivision from nineteen ninety-one? There's, there is no um, there's no clear line of, of, of really what happened. So, you know, going back to um financing, and I, and I believe financing is a huge part of this piece where we need to get lessees up there and on their land, that is number one, right? And so who's not to say that they can't do that right now with a HUD program, section one eight four A, right? With the guarantee for them to get loans to build new homes? Why can't we create a temporary planning department to allow those guys to, what do you call it at the end? Occupy their homes? We can get um permits, we can do everything up into final inspection. Why can't we create something where we can provide that? The department can provide that, is what I'm saying, provide that final inspection. And what I just said, didn't have nothing to do with the county.
Okay, thank you very much, we, we got to move on. Thank you for the input, appreciate it.
You know, because of this thing is with this mass opposition here, I know the hard work that Jim and Juan put into it, I have a hard time passing it through. But we do have to find, I mean, it's one thing to say, eh, we've got to work on this, and then no one does anything for six months. If we're gonna, there's gotta, we gotta have a, gotta do something. That's why I asked the question, how do you foresee this thing playing out, realistically playing out? You know, that's, and to answer that question, I don't know what, what that realistic term means because I don't know what the boundaries are. I don't know if the department can, or the department does have the capacity to okay and give the final inspection and not have county approval. Uh, uh, there's questions I cannot answer. So my, I think we should defer this, but we should have a plan. Yeah, but we got to have a plan. But before we leave today, let's talk stories and have a plan to move forward. I don't want to leave this building today with, oh, I'll call you back later. Let's please, and I'd like to be a part of dialogue with Jim and you folks today before we leave. So we have something, a legitimate plan with Juan too, please to be part of this dialogue. We're going to do something and fix this problem, get it fixed, really realistically. And I'm not sure use a realistic terminology to be derogatory in any way, shape or form. But I think we, with this answer, that got to get done, got to get answered. And once we get those answers, we have to make an informed decision on how to move forward. Are you guys okay with that?
Can we, um, can you guys request that, that, that you can have a beneficiary consultation?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that, okay? So we'll defer it. Um, any objections, commissioners will defer. I do want to move forward on this thing and in collaboration and working with the folks. So let's identify uh, you know, some of the simple things you can do right now. I mean, we don't have to consult or whatever, you know, get the uh physical addresses, look at the coal planning of the roads and, you know, you guys uh working with us and figuring out where to put your water tanks that can be used by the fire department. All that we can do without having to take action. This commencement date is uh, you know, there are ramifications, good ramifications when we do it. But let's do it in a way where you folks uh understand what's the ramifications of, of doing that. But we do want to, and I do want to uh put this to bed, but in a way that everybody, and we're not going to have total unanimous uh, you know, consent. Uh, there will be some that for whatever reasons uh don't want to move forward, don't want a commencement date. We got to get a commencement date, okay? So this matter will be deferred and we'll uh get back to you folks, we have your names, and we'll have uh the consultation. Anything else? Okay, next item on the agenda, C one, acceptance of the twenty twenty-six Native Hawaiian Housing Block Grant, uh annual housing plan. Lehu?
Aloha, Chair, members of the commission, Lehu Kinilau Kano. Nahazda Government Relations Program Manager. Uh, before you, today is item C one. So the recommended motion is that the Hawaiian Homes Commission accept the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Native Hawaiian Housing Block Grant Annual Housing Plan.
Okay, I could have a motion and then we'll get some questions and allow uh people to testify. They're second?
Second.
Okay, any questions, Commissioner?
So a presentation was done last month when the draft was presented. Um, I do have the same presentation, I can go through it if that is necessary. But again, we did that last month and I know we're limited with time. What I can try to do is just address the questions that I'm aware of from the testimony. So the first question has to do with um homeowner financing for Puona. In item three of the housing plan, we are factoring for homeowner financing for Puona. Keep in mind, this housing plan is from July one, twenty twenty-five to June thirty, twenty twenty-six. So any homes that are constructed beyond that date would be in the next housing plan. So I'm accounting for the homes that we expect to be constructed in this upcoming year. So I wanted to address that. Developer financing, there was some interest in wanting to lessen the amount of developer financing, but what has occurred is in twenty twenty-three, HHFDC approved Lytec Low Income Housing Tax Credit Award to um Ikaiko Ohana for La'Iopua for thirty-two units. In twenty twenty-four, there was an award to Mark Development for thirty units in Hanape, Hanapepe, Hawaii. And then there is an application going in this upcoming for low-income housing tax credits for Palamanui and La'Iopua. So what this does is it leverages the Nahazda funds. Again, for three million in Nahazda funds, thirty units will be developed using other funds. And those units serve low-income families, some who may not be able to qualify for housing otherwise. So the intent with developer financing is to leverage the funds to hopefully develop more units. So that was um one of the issues. There was some issues going into the annual performance report and some of the things that we report. Again, the main point for the annual performance report is any activities that is done during that year, we say in advance how we're going to spend the money. And at the end of the year, we report on how those funds were spent. So some of the um notable points that were made is that, for example, there was more NCIP. We did use Nahazda for infrastructure in Kapole, for East Kapole two C. Um, there was a testifier who testified that more Nahazda should be going for that. Keep in mind that whatever portion Nahazda provides for infrastructure, that same proportionate amount needs to go to low-income families. And not all families who come forward are low-income, we have some who are over-income. So you want to strike that balance. So we're always trying to be mindful of how much funds goes in for Nahazda for infrastructure funding. I think that addresses most of the issues. The other issue was property acquisition. In the last housing plan, we did have twenty-five million allocated that is going towards the purchase of the Waipouli Courtyards, which this commission did approve. Um, and so this housing plan, as of right now, is not projecting any property acquisition, but we still included it in the housing plan, but we didn't project any budget spending for that. There were some points made about whether certain programs were approved. The Kupuna Rental Subsidy Program was approved by the commission. The COVID Response Program was approved by the commission. So um all of those programs were uh approved and put forward by the commission. The other issue was about our housing conversion program. We're looking at taking existing units. So right now, we have a, a building in Kalailoa that was former officer quarters that has actually been under a lot of construction. And that is going to serve beneficiaries who may be homeless at this time, and they just need someplace to go, and we can wrap around services, that's the intent for that. There's a separate um building or units that's on Hawaiian Homelands, it's called Uleke Kukui in Maile. And there's eighty units, those are going to be converted to forty units. So those are all projects that are being uh recommended and it's part of the housing plan. I think with that, I've addressed most of what I saw, but always open to, I think the other main point, which I would like to make, is that uh the Home Assistance Program, which helps for our families that are in the oldest homesteads that may have some home repairs to do. Um, one recommendation was maybe we do some outreach. Um, so we'll definitely take a look at that and see if we can come up with a sort of a, an outreach schedule for what might work to let families know about the programs and any questions they may have. So that would be something we can also look at. So again, I hope that addresses, um, I'm not sure if the testifiers will, will present on those issues, but I just wanted to at least respond based on what I saw, some of the issues. Mahalo.
Any, any questions, uh, Commissioner? Uh, Commissioner, any?
Just a comment, Chair. I know that Nahazda fills in an awful lot of funding that we can't get anywhere else. And especially for our people who need the assistance. And I know that Lehu uh in concert with the department is working hard. Uh, Chair, I know you push hard because we need that twenty-two million dollars uh so that we can service our beneficiaries, the people who are already here, but the people who uh have hopes to get on that list. And then Nahazda program and Lehu, through your leadership, you know, you're making things possible for people who thinks that, think it impossible to get there. So thank you for your hard work and the staff's work. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Any other question? If not, we have some uh testifiers, Kainoa McDonald? Next one, Evelani McBride?
Aloha, Commissioners. I am testifying on a gent item, I'm Evelani Levon McBride, Calpel Homestead Association President and the Shaw Oahu Mokapuni. I'm testifying on a gen, uh, item C one on the twenty-five, twenty-six Native Hawaiian Block Grant Annual Housing Plan. And last month, we attended the uh Maui Lanai Oahu Mokapuni meeting last Thursday, and we discussed Nahazda plan. I just wanted to put in it um that, as you can see, that we're putting up. Um, they, I want to talk about three things on this C one. The homeowners financing, I think with all the awards coming up, it's very important for homeownership uh financing. And I think it's important, you know, as well as the other funding. Um, I just want the commissioners to know in Oahu that we have to recognize the obligations under the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act and look at the Nahazda monies. And one of the problems that I look at talking to our community is for the homeowners, you know, I, my question is, how is this eligibility process? What steps are you taking to identify the family? And the other question, based on page eleven from Lehu's, you know, um, the average turnkey price is four hundred thousand, but I think that's not a correct, the current prices of homes is at six hundred ninety-nine compared to Puona. Um, and I also want to uh say that on page twenty-two, you know, the map for twenty units. And I also wanna say that on page 22, you know, the map for 20 units, I wanted to have more explanation on what the 20 units each that would receive a total of 588,875,000. And I, you know, I questioned that money. The Nahazda monies to me should definitely be used to directly benefit homestead beneficiaries for housing. And inside my presentation, you can see some of the questions that we have that, you know, that we need to address and I've brought against for you folks at the moment. And I think it's very important because Nahazda monies too, a second thing I wanna do is crime prevention and safety. I've spoke with Lehuah since 2016 and I wanna bring it to the attention that please consider adding allocation to activity as outlining eligible activities approved by HUD. Yeah, we are asking to approve developer financing and I think also at the same time, we can also adjust allocations for crime prevention. And I wanna say that in, in one of the activities, crime prevention is one of those eligible activities. And in just the last five years, we have nine serious crime, serious crimes from drug trafficking to ghost gun. Commissioners, I can show you nine, nine homesteads that have direct gun shootings with ghost gun. That is very alarming to me. And as much as everything else is important, we have a serious crisis of serious violence of ghost guns on the homestead. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention that all of this is important, but the safety of our community, we must consider allocating fundings to secure the safety of Hawaiian homeland neighborhoods. Increasing the amount of funding, right, for developer funding can also be the same to increasing the safety and prevention. Look at all the guns. Three teenagers in Kalpea shot. Right after that, a gun in Malu Hi on the 13th. On, on 2/28, Kalpea, three teens shot. On, on 3/11, another replica gun. On 3/12, Wainai Valley, two masked men held at gunpoint. From 2020, Wainai Valley, two guns, two people shot. From Kanahelea, shut down a gaming room of prostitution, chop shots. In Nanakuli, Department of Justice writes up drug trafficking and ghost gun. In Kalpea, another ghost gun, held two guys, shot a 22-year-old. Kalpea, another shot near Kapole Middle School. Papakulea, drug trafficking and ghost gun. This, this is a, this is, I cannot explain how important this is. And I ask that you Commissioners, consider this. You know, I've been staying up trying to put this together with everything else and I wanna bring it to the attention on this, that we somehow can talk, Chair. The next thing, I know I have limited time, I wanna also talk about the HAP program. This program covers the department's attempt to address substandard aging homes on the homelands, providing assistance to low-income households to repair existing homes, including home replacement, develop and construction, energy retrofit, building and compliance. The community in Kapole are asking, is there any specific process required for this, for this? And can there be training also? I know it's only for Nanakuli and Paku Kala, but how can we prepare the Nahazda monies in this program of the 2 million that's for HAP? I, I think, you know, beyond just the older homes, there's also other homes that need to be, need to be addressed that is, has not met the standard or is not too cold. And I like to know, really, is there a specific process? And can the training be made to not just Paku Kala and Nanakuli, but maybe the other ones in here, Papakulea, maybe?
Evelani, excuse me. Evelani, can you summarize? We got a bunch of stuff, other testifiers and?
These are the things that, these are the things that I wanted to bring to attention in the short time. But I just wanted to bring this to your attention on the half. With more than 50% of Native Hawaiians moving away to Hawaii is the reality. In ending, $1 should not, should be allocated to projects that do fulfill the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act as it was championed by Prince Kohiyo to the end. Mahalo Nui, and I will be submitting my testimony for the record to be included in next month's Hawaiian Homes Commission meeting. Mahalo.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next testifier, Lojalani Smith?
Thank you. No, I just wanted to mention that if I could pass my three minutes to Kainoa McDonald?
Sure.
Yeah, cuz I'm in another meeting and I was waiting.
Well, she didn't testify yet. I don't know if she's available.
I?
She's not on. So you wanna talk and sit?
Uh, you know, I'm in another meeting right now. I'll, I'll leave it that I pass it on to her. I better go call her and see where she stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next testifier, Lono Koholua?
Commissioner, Uncle Lono was gonna yield it to me. I'm Evelani and I did say it, so I thought my six minutes went.
Okay, Evelani.
Yeah, and I just, if I can use his three minutes, you know, Commissioners, I just want you to see that the Nahazda monies that, that is being for the housing plan, I think there needs to be a better process of getting more community engaged. Development of housing is very important right now with the 30,000 of wait lists. But I think what I wanna really stress more than ever is really the, the, the violence that's been happening on the homestead and not just violence, gun violence, armed robberies, gunpoint. I mean, does this not sound important? Housing is important. Housing is important, but the safety of the housing and the community, we must, we must take some kind of action, Chair, on it. This is the fourth shooting in Kalpea that is close to my home where there's an opening where children go. I don't wanna wait till the next time it's someone shot. And every one of these incident, they have no, they have not caught the perpetrators and that is very scary for us on the West Side. I mean, if something was to happen to my family and none of this was happening and there is an enforcement project of 100,000, I wanna know what did that 100,000 do? Because if you see the work that the Neighborhood Security Watch on the West Side has done, we have shut down drug homes, we have saved people from domestic violence. We have worked well with HPD Mike Lambert, that is now Department of Enforcement. And I know you folks approved and there's zero for neighborhood security. Have you guys not listened to the news? Have you guys not seen what has been happening in our homestead? And there is money with serious crimes that the, that Native Hawaiian Housing Block Grant, it secures the community to work with outside agencies, with HBAs and the department and outside agencies to secure its neighborhood. And I would like, Chair, for someone to meet with us and talk with us in regarding to addressing this, because it's, it's, it is, it is a horrible thing that we have to go through and it's, it's called the beneficiaries to be scared. We, quiet tidal enjoyment is something that we, is promised to us. But if we kinda get the help of the department in securing the areas, then there's a crisis going on and we need to address this. So thank you for your folks' time. And Chair, if someone can come and reach out to the Neighborhood Security Watch, we did work with Mr. Hulk and Kipakana, but I think there needs to be seriously addressing the things that we have prepared, the NSW and the things that we wanna show. We have to show you how serious of the crimes that's been happening and action must be taken, must be taken. This cannot be, from 2016, we've been waiting for the funding from the Department of Hawaiian Homes, zero. So please, consider, Oahu Commissioners, please reach out to us. I'll be reaching out to you today to show the evidence that we have and we need your support. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next testifier, Robin Kiliinoho Moku. Oh, excuse me, Kainoa McDonald?
Aloha, everybody.
Aloha.
Is it possible to, to share my screen?
She wanted to share the screen.
Okay, got it. Alrighty, thank you, Leah. Alrighty. So aloha mai kau koe, everyone. My name is Kainoa McDonald. I sit on the Executive Board of the Association of Hawaiians for Hawaiian Homeland and Maui Lanaii Council Mokupuni. I wanted to testify specifically on agenda item C1 in the acceptance of the 2025-2026 Native Hawaiian Housing Block Grant Annual Housing Plan. Thank you so much, Lehuah, for providing some feedback based on the submittal that came with this agenda item. And so what we would like to see is we're gonna go over and I'm gonna try to do it as quickly as possible to go over what the annual housing plan looks like and what is before our Commissioners. There's just a lot of information here, but we took out specific line items on specific budget allocations and we're gonna go through them. So one of the first ones I wanted to go over is homeowner financing. It's on page 21 and I apologize for all of the, the colors, but I think it's, it's critical to show that the math does not math out. So in the homeowner financing, the allocation is for 11.7 million dollars. Here's what, what math doesn't math out. On page 11, the write-up states that the average turnkey home is priced at $400,000. For Maui, the cost of homes is not 400,000. They have exceeded that. Pu'u Hona is at a whopping $699,000. So right here, to start, the math already is incorrect. So when we do the basic math, we could say that at $600,000, based on 27,277 potential applicants who would be, who'd go after the Nahazda funding, this department would need $16.366 million in order for it to be sufficient. That falls short of the 11.77,000. So in ending, we would like to see a reallocation from the developer financing of 7.5 million dollars to go to homeowner financing. Because just in Pu'u Hona alone in Phase 2, you'll see the awards going for 91 potential awards. Next, number two. Please increase the homeowner assistance program. And the homeowner assistance program, excuse me. This one here is specifically where Lehuah indicated that it would go towards Nanakuli and Paku Kala, potentially with $2 million that would give 20 leases, mainly kupuna, the opportunity to repair their homes to improve the quality of substandard units. In line 1.7, essentially, it lays out what the 100,000 will go towards. I believe based on other testimonies, we do need more clarification. Our kupunas are challenged in terms of how to upload their, their information and I'm very glad to hear that Lehuah, at least you will take a look at dedicating some of that time by staff to help our kupuna upload their program and really give us the training for beneficiaries to have a better understanding of how Nahazda looks to process potential applicants seeking Nahazda assistance.
Okay, Kainoa, can you summarize, please?
Yep, in summary, I also wanted to ask this, not Lehuah, that there's a line item for property acquisition which reads, no money. So I just wanted to go on record, was the $25 million allocation in previous submittals, was that returned or is that still on the allocation list? And then lastly, I wanna take this, again, kalamai for the, the colors. This is the annual performance report. I'd like some, to get some understanding of this particular annual performance report that gets, goes before the commission, a year later, there's significant changes in funds based on what was approved. Where did the monies come from? And, and does the department have the authorization to expend the funds after the initial approval from commission? So in ending, I would like to see, I would like to see other, so advise this commission to recognize this obligation. In ending,
A long ending.
When our nation isn't, yeah, I'm just gonna end out here. When our nation is in chaos, we have taken time to read this submission in painstaking detail of this $39 million allocation. In our own urgency to drill down in identifying these unwarranted flaws, the unfair disqualifying access to what beneficiaries are entitled to is the last stop for kupuna to obtain their birthright award to pass down for seven generations. Commissioners, this requires a collective power of beneficiaries to voice their advocacy, to insist upon transparency to the highest levels of government. Beneficiaries input?
Okay, Kainoa, thank you, thank you very much.
That we are confronted, we must push for change.
Thank you, Kainoa. Thank you.
Okay, so to address some of the questions, I did address it upfront, but for homeowner financing, some of the financing was actually done in the last fiscal year and then where the homes are under construction, so they don't come out of the funds from this current fiscal year. So some of that is part of the issue. As I explained as well, the issue of we're only dealing with this fiscal year. So not all the Pu'u Hona homes are gonna be built by June 30, 2026. Some are beyond that, so that is gonna be in the next housing plan. I'm accounting for the homes that are gonna be built in this current fiscal year. So just wanted to address that. Increasing the homeowner assistance program, I think Kainoa cited to the annual performance report, which referenced that we helped one family in Paku Kala and one family in Nanakuli. But to her point, there is a demand for that and we will continue to support as many families. But again, this commission took in action on the policy that the priority is the oldest homesteads first because those homes are usually in more dire need. The newer homes, unfortunately, Kapole is in that boat. They can look at other resources to see about financing those homes. Helping the kupuna upload their docs, you know, I just wanna point out, you know, I appreciate everyone looking at Nahazda, but just to point out, for Pu'u Hona Phase 1, there was 20 days. I have one staff doing this. There was 73 pre-qualifications issued and we have 19 loans for 46, so that's nearly half is coming from Nahazda. Pu'u Hona Phase 2 is gonna be 91 awards. Again, one staff, 158 applications and of those, 107 pre-calls were issued. So I'd like to see with all due respect, what the other lenders, what pre-calls they've been able to issue. Now I get, not all of them can, cuz we have better terms, I understand that. But I like to see how many applications they processed because I was receiving, our, our staff was receiving complaints that they went to other lenders and no one was responding to them. So my, my staff is doing the best job they can. Unfortunately, some people are over-income, so we can only serve those that are 80% and below. But we'll continue to assist families as best we can. I think the last slide, Kainoa showed some of the APR again. What you should consider is that the budget is a floor. It's not a ceiling, meaning we can go higher. Again, it's a budget, it's a proposal. We can always adjust based on how the spending is occurring. The programs are whatever the commission approves or whatever the department is moving in terms of developments. I think she had circled, where are these other funds coming from? The way Nahazda works is we get some program income. So when people pay their loans, that comes back to us. Nahazda has to spend those monies first before we can draw down other federal funds. So that sort of shaded area is all those funds that we're bringing in as program income and those get expended. But I'm more than happy to make myself available. I've gone in the Maui Mokupuni calls before. If it's helpful to have conversations in community, as you folks are well aware, the more we can engage in community, the better the program can be. Evelani's Crime Prevention, I don't deny that that is a big issue for our community and I'm more than willing to work with. We have a great enforcement team to see how we can do a better job and where Nahazda fits in in that. So far, they've been referring older dilapidated homes and we've been trying to work with those families to get those homes either repaired or in a better condition, so this commission?
doesn't have to. I mean, we wanna prevent lease cancellation to the extent we can. So, again, um, thank you very much. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to address any concerns.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Lehua, um, and only because I've been getting a lot of, um, calls regarding Pu'u Hona project. And out of the 19 Nahazda, how many have been approved? All 19?
So far, all 19. We're going through, um, some of the internal processes to make sure, 'cause Nahazda can only finance up to appraisal, so we're just working through those finer details. Um, but hopefully, all of those will pan out and we'll be able to move forward to the next step.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair, Commissioner Nevis?
So, Lehua, thank you for, for explaining that, you know, how the funds are moved around. I'm, I'm sure we stay within the cap that we've approved. But I guess, you know, maybe in that, that summary that we go over that at the end of the year, so we understand where that's moved. I could sort of figure out where it's coming from, but it'd be good to know, uh, that, that it is, uh, like, uh, a ceiling. Or not a ceiling.
It's a floor.
It's a floor.
We can go over.
And we're working for the floor, but we're all working with the same amount of chips, is what I'm saying. And, uh, thank you for explaining that, 'cause it makes, it makes more sense to me where we went from, you know, budgeting 250,000, we end up spending 3 million, but we certainly reduced it elsewhere. So, it's sort of putting the, put the points together, we'd be good to, when you present that at the end of the year, so we know.
Sure. This next one, I think the annual performance report for this period from July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025, I usually do a draft in August and then for, uh, acceptance by the commission in September and turn around and submit to HUD.
Yeah, that'd be good. So, we'd have that drafted, then, uh, you know, as we start making changes, maybe advise the commission, hey, we've made some changes, so don't be shocked if you see some monies moving around.
Sure. Oh, and the other question I think I didn't address, that 25 million was for the purchase of Waipoli, and we expect those funds to be expended in this fiscal year by June 30. That's why it's showing zero in ne- in this current housing plan for the next fiscal year.
Okay, uh, let's see. We have, uh, seven more people that wanna testify. I'm gonna be real strict on the three minutes, uh, time limits. Uh, next in line, and this is just on this i- item. So, uh, Bo Kahu'i?
Aloha, Commissioners. My name is Bo Kahu'i, and I'm, uh, the Executive Director for Laia Pua Community Development Corporation. I also reside in the villages of Laia Pua. Nahazda plays a pivotal role in providing financing for our homestead. Laia Pua is not faced with the same chronic conditions as the West Oa'ohahu residents are faced with. But, and having said that, uh, I couldn't discover if there were any monies left in model activities at the Nahazda in order for, um, the department can provide grants to these communities so that they can assist themselves in policing their own community. The model activities allow this commission to provide opportunities for homesteaders to apply for that money so that they can look for and find ways and solutions on their own to serve their community, you know? And it's critical, especially for what I've seen in the news. I'm just glad it's not happening in my community. Um, but we, we, we would apply to for some funding, some kind of safety measures, helping with our, 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 our community policing effort and so on. I mean, we, we all are subject to the, you know, crime. You know, it happens. It happens in every community, some more than others. West Oa'ohahu unfortunate with their dilemma. It's, it, I see it. I'm, I'm just perplexed by it all. Um, the other thing is that the Nahazda, um, we'd like to see more money put in to the Nahazda loan fund for, um, um, you know, about, for, uh, uh, leases that wanted to improve on their homes and so on. I know that there are limitations. Um, the, you can, you know, go for a upgrade of your home for $100,000 with a 1% interest loan. That is great. I mean, every, everybody that needs that kind of money should take up that opportunity, assuming they qualify. So, I, again, I can't emphasize enough the need for model activities to get funded. Thank you.
Thank you, Bo. Uh, next testifier, Misty Griffiths.
Aloha.
Uh, next testifier, Misty Griffiths.
Uh, aloha. Can you folks hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Aloha mai kau koe. Thank you for taking the time. I am coming to you as a beneficiary, uh, and not so much, uh, as a lender. As you all well know, I do lending. But I do have a few questions with regards to, um, the issues that we're having with Nahazda. And I will answer Lehua's question, which I'm glad she did ask, ask how are other lenders prequalifying. For myself, as, uh, one of the lenders for Pu'u Hona, I did qualify, uh, 134, and I'm sorry to say that 60% of them, I had to refer to Nahazda. You know, a lot of our people are falling below the 80% AMI. Um, but we have had a few little issues, and I think if we all work together, along with Nahazda, we can uh, find the right solution. A couple of the things that I've been working outside of my job, uh, is to work with a lot of our kapunas, 'cause they were coming back. Of course, we know they had hard time uploading, so they would come after hours. I mean, I would help with the scanning and so forth. Uh, they were immediately sent an email, and I think there's just a little bit of a disconnect, uh, that they're ineligible. They had questions. Some had owned homes, some didn't own homes. And actually, I have a few questions. So, there was two methods based on, uh, the policies that, uh, was given to us, uh, from 2021, the Nahazda policies. And as far as eligibility, when we spoke with Annie, uh, with the Dowling meeting, she did mention to us lenders, so when we're taking in the applications and they don't qualify, we send them to Nahazda. We're looking at the 80% AMI, the adjusted gross income, excuse me, on the tax returns. Um, however, some of the kapunas were coming back and saying, we don't understand this, and I guess the method was being used, um, was the Section 8, and I'm not familiar with the Section 8 qualification. So, maybe we can get some training classes or, or some transparency for Nahazda to our beneficiaries, just understanding that method of how they can qualify. A lot of them started coming back to me, or some people that I didn't even talk to. They weren't even part of my applications, ended up coming to see me, um, and asking, how can I make this work? And I'm basically referring them back to Nahazda because it's their qualification. Um, I think they fear the repercussion of what happens. They're just in fear. And I think, um, especially the kapunas, um, those that own real estate, I was curious as to, and maybe this is a question for, uh, Lehua. One of the things that came back to one of our kapunas out in Hana, they owned real estate vacant land, and they were ineligible because they added 6% of the value of that property was considered, uh, income. Although it's a vacant lot, they're never gonna rent it out. Um, so I was just curious how that guideline worked. Um, I think, you know, if you look at the flyers that sent out, I don't think there's enough information for our beneficiaries. And again, I think we should have some workshops. I, I really feel for Annie having to do that many applications, 'cause I know exactly how it feels. You feel like you're working seven days a week. Um, like I said, I did 134 myself, and 60% went to Nahazda now. Some of them came back to me and they said they were ineligible.
Misty, excuse me, Misty. Yeah, your, your time is up.
Okay, no problem.
We've got some other winners. Thank you very much. Okay, the next testifier, Janice Herrick. Uh, next person, Grace Gomes.
Okay, yep. We have them here in the office. Kalamai.
Uh, Grace Gomes, go ahead, please.
Okay. All right. Can we go, uh, to Auntie Velma Mariano? Auntie Velma? Okay.
There we go.
Okay. Aloha, Chair and Commissioners. God bless you for the work that you're doing. I've been at Paku Kalahoian Homes for 51 years, since 1974. So, I am testifying on the agenda size item, C1, 2025 to 2026. Native Hawaiian Housing Block Grant Annual Housing Plan. In attending the Sha Maui Lanai Maui Lanai and Oahu Mokupuna this PM Thursday, we have this to share. Recommend improvements in Nahazda to decrease the waitlist and put beneficiaries on their lambs. Please accept this testimony to provide the following line items of the Nahazda Fund, and I urge Maui Commissioner Archie Kalepa to recognize this obligation under the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. I strongly advise to question this allocation to the following. On page 19, developer financing allocations, 7.5 million. Assistance to go directly to developer as part of the capital stack for vertical construction financing. Other proposed development may also require developer financing. Is this allocation important this year? Well, the priority is to address the waitlist. As long, as a longtime homesteader, supporting beneficiaries on the waitlist to obtain their award is equally important. Issuring direct grant awards of 100,000 each to the waitlist to purchase or build their own homes, all of which will be owned by the HHCA beneficiaries, setting up the next generation of successors, building equity for their families from day one. On page 25, Home Assistance Program, 2 million. Last month, commission meeting, Lehua Kinilau Kano stated that Paku Kalo and Nanakuli as the oldest homesteads to receive funding of 100,000 of these deferred no-payment loans. Based on the allocation, it would provide 20 households the op- opportunity to apply. Paku Kalo has a handful of homes that occupy by kupuna that on fixed income, limited social security, leaving them financially stressed. The need is great for many homes that have gone to disrepair. I'm one of them. Homesteaders need more education on how this program works. Nahazda should consider offering classes to kupuna and their families that includes successors. I ask for transparency in application process. Kupuna leases are electronically challenged with limited access to computers. The challenge is not knowing what the department's process is. I thank you for this time as an HHCA, HHCA homestead leader, to provide na'o to support kupuna programs. Make aloha, knowing. God bless you all, and thank you for this time. Aloha.
Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, next testifier, Janice Herrick. Uh, next person, Grace Gomes.
Okay, no Janice. We have, uh, Marie Ka'owamo.
Hey, Marie.
If that's okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, you can get started.
Okay.
Right, yeah. Okay. Aloha mai Hawaiian Homes Commissioners. My name is Arya Marie Ka'owamo. I am testifying on an agendaized, uh, item C1, 2025 to 2026 Native Hawaiian Housing Block Grant, um, NHHBG Annual Housing Plan. In attending the SCHHA Maui Lanai and Oahu Mokupuni this past Thursday, the Nahazda NHHBG Housing Plan was shared. I also have been attending Pu'u Hona Hawaiian Homestead Associations by monthly meetings. Presentations by DHHL, Dowling, SCHHA, and various mortgage lenders have provided to help prepare for the orientation and awards process. My father-in-law is Francis Ka'owamo Senior. He is 75 years old, on Maui's undivided, un- undivided interest lease list, a list that the department has committed to ending. He is no longer on the waitlist. He is considered to be a lese, holding a paper lease, for the past two and a half decades. He has been waiting for this moment to award his lease to his grandchildren. When Pu'u Hona was being offered, I didn't know where to start. I began attending Zoom meetings held by Pu'u Hona Hawaiian Homestead Association and SCHHA Maui Lanai Mokupuni Council meetings. This helped me gain some understanding of the awards process, how to prepare for the prequalification. My child, Kenai Ka'owamo, is a successor, and we want to do a simultaneous transfer at the time of the award. In going through this process, I did encounter some challenges during my income eligibility process. The upload process was challenging because I was missing a document, and there was no place for me to save my place in the upload process. My mortgage lender, Misty Griffiths, took some time out to assist in navigating throughout. In the end, after a week and a half of stress of the unknown, um, I was finally approved. Please accept this testimony to provide, um, the following components of the Nahazda plan. Uh, number one, page 23, down payment closing costs for no, non, no income 200,000. Uh, why is there no activity for households that meet below the 80% of the HUD AMI? Uh, please go to page 11 of the Housing Plan Submission. States there are 32,499 total Native Hawaiian households eligible for Nahazda. Uh, provide parent transparency on Nahazda housing policies and guidelines so that all future beneficiaries can better prepare. Uh, number two, page 21, homeowner financing, 11,770, uh, thousand. Increase this amount to meet the need. According to DHHL, Pu'u Hona Phase 2 will award 91 lots. In light of waitlisters like me and kupuna waitlisters who have disputed their Nahazda decision, provide an official policy or guideline that has been approved by HUD and/or the Hawaiian Homes Commission to follow. We ask Nahazda staff to provide in-person meetings to discuss these determinations. Number three, page 19, developer financing, uh, 7.5 million. Assistance to go directly to developer for rent with option to purchase units.
Hello, Marie. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, next testifier, Pono Asano.
Oh, mahalo.
Uh, Pono Asano.
Yeah, just leave him open. Aloha, aloha. Morning, Pono. Yeah, aloha, Chair. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you all, Commissioners. Aloha, aloha, aloha. Um, thank you so much, everyone. How good you're in the Nahazda process. Uh, it's a, it's a battle out here. Uh, we appreciate all your help and you all for, as doing with Nahazda. Thank you uh, for holding the fort for our beneficiaries. Here right now, um, in this room, was able to grab a bunch of the kupunas who has gone through this process. Again, some of the struggles just getting onto your laptop or just to go ahead and testify. So, we apologize, 'cause there's a delay, um, getting us in the seat to testify in front of you folks. But also, with that same struggle, none of our kupono people who are processing for Nahazda are trying to become lenders, are trying to become credit counselors. They're trying to be qualified applicants. That's, that's it. Um, I would like to just simply shine some light on some of the things as far as to keep the cultural protocols in place when speaking to some of our individuals. They are kupuna. They are kupuna, so we need to go ahead and make sure that, uh, when we explain to them that we need additional support. I do see that we are understaffed with the support with Nahazda. Just to request, maybe if we can, use Nahazda funds to create some support directly here on Maui, to support the people directly here on Maui with that face-to-face time which they need. And the other part too is that, within the capital stack, I just wanna say, I understand that can help with the qualifying parameters with our developers. Maybe we can look for another way, open up a line of credit, support that capital stack differently, that we can get that reimbursement, give them a low-interest line of credit to help them, uh, qualify for their development loan and construction loans. Uh, with that being said, I appreciate you all. Thank you so much, Chair. Aloha.
Okay, thank you, Pono. Uh, next testifier, Shirley Ke'kona. Oh, you guys got a line over there. Okay, okay, Shirley.
Okay, go ahead. Hi, my name is Shirley Ke'kona. I, I currently...
Hi, my name is Shirley Ke'kona. I, I currently was rewarded lot sixty-six at Pu'u Hona. Phase one, a couple of times of the lot selection, I had a cosigner. I was provided by Central Pacific Bank. However, circumstances had changed, and I no longer have a cosigner. I then contacted Misty at Maui Money Store to see if I could qualify on my own. After meeting her, she said that I did not qualify on my own. And she recommended that I get financed from Nahazda as my income was below the eighty percent area mid-income. After applying, I was told I could not apply for finance as contacted shown on borrow. I was then told by Millie Atadallings and Annie from Nahazda that I need to cancel my current contract to go back on the list for Phase Two and then apply for finance. I feel that I'm being neglected as a Kupuna for focusing at to cancel contract. I should be able to apply for finance through Nahazda. I have on the list, I have been on the list since nineteen seventy-eight. Forty-six years I've been waiting. I want to, I want to hub, hubly ask for your considerations by allowing me to get financed through Nahazda for me, for my lot for Phase One. I lost my two kids, and I want to do something for my grandchildren's. I humbly ask, and I thank you guys for listening. I thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. You know what, um, do the Commissioners have any other questions? If not, we'll, I'll call for the
I have a question.
Commissioner.
Yeah, is it possible for us to get, uh, use Nahazda funding for the positions like, uh, Pono said to help? Because I know you guys only have one position that's helping the, like Maui, for instance. Is that something that is, can be considered or no? We can consider it, but again, these are requirements, and if there's any failure in meeting the requirements, it's not these individuals who are gonna, it's the department. And then it may affect us getting Nahazda funding in the future. So I'm not opposed. We use other entities. CNHA, for example, has been a vendor, so it's not that we cannot, we just, the, the, the process is rigorous. As was explained, there are two methods, the ten forty section eight. I don't want to get into the weeds, but if you have an asset, there is an asset calculation. And you know, some of these Kupuna do have assets. These are for those who are unable to get any other kind of financing. I heard that one example was a vacant lot, but I've had, I've had, you know, people say I Kupuna, but they have businesses, they have multiple properties, and with all due respect, that's not what this program is for. There are other mechanisms to secure financing, so.
Any other questions?
Sure, I just want to make a statement.
Commissioner Neves.
You know, as, you know, my, my position on, on rental housing has, has been known. I, I don't like rental housing, but as I read through your report clearly, uh, on page nineteen, uh, the assistance is going to the, uh, rent with purchase, a rent for option purchase. So, uh, in, in that respect, I, I do respect that, and that's, I, I will be voting in favor because that, when you say just rentals, but you explain it as the rent to purchase, that puts our people on land. I'm in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, F1, approval to amend Land Management Division's fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget for acquisition of seven eighty-seven Eisenberg Street Properties.
Aloha and good afternoon, Commissioners. Kahana Albino, uh, under the Land Management Division. Item number F1, Land Manager requesting the approval to amend Land Management's, um, Division, Land Management Division's FY twenty twenty-five budget for the acquisition of seven eighty-seven Eisenberg Street on the island of Oahu, TMK cited in the submittal.
Yeah, and any questions, Commissioners? Uh, no testifiers. Okay.
Chair, Chair. Yeah, just, just a statement. I, you know, I agree that the, 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 the piece of land, obviously, we need to make sure we grab it all. Okay, so we can develop. Initially, on, on the proposal for, for, for the Bola Drone for Middle East property, I voted against that, but just because of the, the agreement with the, with the developer was that if, if he couldn't get enough Native Hawaiians, he could use, uh, non-Native Hawaiians for the project. I still maintain that position, but I will vote in favor because it makes more sense to have all the land for whatever we do. Okay, thank, thank you, Chair.
Okay, actually, could I get a motion for this item?
So move.
In a second. Okay. Uh, any other discussions? Okay, uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried.
Aloha, Commissioners. Item number F2, LND seeking approval to issue a revocable permit to Eo' Apala Corporation on Lot Three and Chapter Flats, uh, the industrial subdivision on, uh, in Wanalua, Island of Oahu, TMK is listed on the submittal.
Okay, could I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried.
Item number F3, um, LND seeking approval to issue a right-of-way permit to Kula Nona Po'e Hawaii on in Pu'u Huaina, Honolulu, Papukolea, um, on the island of Oahu, uh, TMK is listed in the submittal. We have, um, uh, Senior VP of the Association, Auntie Punee Ke'koha online, if she's, I think she should be available. Any Commissioners have any questions regarding the submittal that submitted?
Okay, can I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, uh, any questions? Uh, yeah, Punee, uh, would you like to say something? Okay, go ahead, Punee.
Aloha, everybody.
Hello.
So I did send a video into the, to Kahana, but you know, I think we're good. I, I'd like to ask the Commission for their kind support of Kula Nona Po'e Hawaii's proposal to acquire a portion of Pu'u Huaina in order to develop the Kupuna Supported Living Center on that island. Uh, we launched this project in January with our community, and, um, Leah, do you have that, that part, that video?
Video on there. Mike, you?
Sorry.
Yeah, just hang on. I, I think Mike's pulling it up.
Yeah, I, yeah, I sent it in, and we'd like to share that with you before you call for the motion. Mahalo.
I think Auntie Punee emailed it.
I can share it, Leah, if you open, if you let me share.
Okay, you share, Auntie. Great.
Can?
No, I'm gonna have her share. She can share.
Yeah, Punee, you can share it.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, let me, let me know if you got it. How really bad it is. Okay. Let me try. So this is why I sent it to you guys. Can you see it?
Not yet, Auntie. Not yet. Okay, keep looking.
Got it. I'm sorry, guys. Yeah.
Uh, sorry, Punee, no more.
That's okay. That's okay, Kahana. Don't worry. So you have the application. Our application is in the packet, Commissioners. Uh, we kindly ask for your support in moving forward this Papukolea Kupuna Supported Living Project. Thank you very much for your consideration. Any questions? I am available. Mahalo, noe.
Yeah, okay. Uh, let's see. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Congratulations, Punee. Good luck.
Thank you. Mahalo, noe.
We touch Auntie Punee.
Yes. Thank you.
Item number F4, uh, Land Management is seeking approval to issue, uh, seeking Commission's approval to issue three revocable permits uh, to, uh, Standard Scale Automation. That's one. Hawaii, that's one. Uh, second one to HBR Builders Corp. That's two, and the third to Mariihi LLC DBA Hawaii State Construction, and this covers, uh, Lot Two in Shaftre Flats Industrial Subdivision on Wanalua, Island of Oahu, TMK is listed.
Okay, can we have a motion?
So move.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, I do, Chair.
Commissioner Neves.
So, uh, God, I'm looking at the square footage. So on your second page, I sort of looked at the square footage at, uh, for A, comes out to eighteen hundred, or B, uh, just going down your list, um, comes out to nineteen fifty and twenty-four fifty for the last one. That comes out to, um, it only comes out to sixty-two hundred and fifty square feet. So, and but the proposal says ten thousand. Can you explain?
Yeah, so what we're trying to do is, um, retain these sublesses. These are sublesses of the current lessee, and we're trying to retain the same, um, rent uh, that they are under right now with the
Got it. What I'm saying is the square footage doesn't add up.
Oh.
Square footage shows a ten thousand one fifty-three, but it's only, it's sixty-two fifty based on what you have here for each individual. It's probably something minor you could figure out. But the other thing I, the other question I had is, is each one of them has a different rate.
Correct.
Is there any reason why they're different rate? They're all in a warehouse.
Again, we, we tried to, um, keep them retained under the, the agreement that they had.
Just to retain them, but I would, I would hope that we look, as we look for, we equalize that rate, so they're all paying the same rate. And I think there's something different in what they're doing.
The reason for retaining them is because of the, um, the area with, yeah.
Understood, understood. Okay, very good. Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried.
Aloha, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, uh, Item G1, approval of a temporary water bill subsidy for Kailapa Homestead lessees on the DHHL Kauai High Water System. Andrew Choi.
Oahu Commissioners, Andrew Choi, Planning Program Manager. The recommended motion action for Item G1 is that the Hawaiian Homes Commission approve the temporary water bill subsidy for Kailapa Homestead lessees on the DHHL Kauai High Water System. With me today, I have Louis Makaila, who will be taking us through, uh, the submittal and information to provide on this decision.
Mahalo. What is sweet for this slide, Chair? Thank you, Michael. Yes, thank you. Um, back one slide, please. Aloha, Commissioners. Thank you so much for your time today. Um, want to talk about this item. I apologize in advance. That submittal was very, very data-heavy, and I tried to slim it down a little bit in the presentation, um, but there is just quite a bit of information for this topic. Wanted to cover some of the past actions uh, and highlight where we are right now. So in February of last year, uh, came before the Commission with a presentation of, um, the draft of the update to the Kauai High Regional Plan. In that information, it covered, um, the priority project, which is water or Viola, um, and it captures a handful of different components that needed to be addressed. Uh, that was the first time that we discussed it directly with Commissioners. In May of last year, we did provide an update to the Commission at that time. Um, again, it was an update specific to the implementation action steps. We talked about some short-term, midterm, and long-term solution to the various issues that our Kauai High Homesteaders are experiencing. Um, in July of last year, uh, at our regular commission meeting, the Commission voted to approve and adopt the Kauai High Regional Plan, which included, um, short-term, midterm, long-term solutions, and specifically, uh, the issue of this temporary subsidy. Uh, today, we are before the Commission, uh, to discuss what that temporary subsidy looks like and how we can move forward in the implementation action steps. Um, briefly, the next steps do involve quite a bit more work. We need to continue working on midterm as well as long-term solutions to address the broader issue of water at Kauai High. Next slide. Some more background and context for folks. Um, initially, the water rate schedule or the water rates that we have, uh, for more than just Kauai High, but inclusive of what's called Kauai High Unit One Water System, um, those, those new rates were approved in twenty eighteen. Um, that rate schedule had a gradual step increase each year on July first, the fiscal year, over a ten-year period from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-nine. That was set. Um, the background information shared when that decision was made was in order to break even. So across those various, uh, small water systems, the department was having to heavily subsidize all of those systems. And the goal for this, uh, kind of gradual each-year increase was meant to, um, work up to break even. Sorry.
Just sort of following you. I just want to make sure I'm following the right. You're talking about the FY nineteen all the way to twenty-six or twenty-four?
Um, it should say to twenty-nine.
Yeah, it says to twenty-eight, actually.
Okay.
Which ones are? For the hook-up?
Yes. So for, for the water rate schedule, it's a gradual step up. It's inclusive of, um, the kind of two-part billing system, and I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. But in total, the department was subsidizing about one million dollars per year across all three systems, Olehua, Anahula, as well as Kauai High. Um, the break even, um, also included the idea of reserve funds. Now, that's something that's more standard in, um, you know, kind of typical water systems, water purveyors. Their only source of income is typically just billings. Um, DHHL, as a water purveyor, as a water operator, we do have other options in order to, um, deal with repair, uh, replacement and maintenance of the water system. For instance, updates to the whole Olehua system on Moloka'i came with federal funding from the USDA. So we do have options besides just increasing our billing in order to gather money from the water users. Um, the results of this billing, uh, as we discussed last year in May, was that as of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, our billings to the users actually exceeded what the cost of operating the system was. Um, and at that time, it was by about forty-two thousand dollars. Next slide. So going into the rate schedule, so I've highlighted in red, this is the current fiscal year, FY twenty-five. Um, but as of July first, it's meant to jump up to FY twenty-six. This is for Kauai High's residential, um, lessee service rate. Now, it's a two-part billing sys, um, billing for our residents. There's a meter service fee, which is a base rate, standard rate, that's billed by monthly. FY twenty-five is, um, a hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents by monthly. The second part of the billing is the service delivery fee. Um, that's a usage rate, and that's by a thou, a thousand gallons or a cake out. Um, so that's based on however much each user uses. Uh, the billing rate for FY twenty-five is ten dollars and eleven cents per cake out. That's for the bottom tier, the lowest tier. Now, when we talk about something like a subsidy, um, we don't talk about that lightly. Now, when we talk about something like a subsidy, um, uh, we don't talk about that lightly. Especially because that has big impacts on the trust. So if we're contemplating the idea of a subsidy, then we need to look at, if we're doing for one, then how do we look at what's happening with all the other users? And I know that that's important to you folks as decision-makers. So I did include in here comparisons. I have on here the Ho'olehua Residential Water Rate Schedule. So the comparison for the meter fee, again, we have Kauai High is at one hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents by monthly. Ho'olehua is nine dollars and eighty-seven cents by monthly. And Anahola is forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents by monthly. If we compare it to the county, it's twenty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents monthly, right? So closer to sixty dollars by monthly. Now, if we look at the second part of the billing, the service delivery fee per keg out based on usage, ten dollars and eleven cents, uh, per keg out. Um, in comparison to Ho'olehua, it's two dollars and twenty-two cents per keg out. In comparison to Anahola, five dollars and fifty-eight cents per keg out. In comparison to the county, it's three dollars and seventy-four cents. So there is quite a disparity. Next slide. Um, also wanted to talk through the Kailapa Community Association. So they actually have their own water rate schedule in here. I wanted to share that with you folks. Their base rate meter, um, fee, the monthly fee that they pay or bimonthly fee that they pay is the same as all the rest of the residents. However, their usage rate per, um, thousand gallons, there's only one tier, so it's a flat rate no matter how much they use. But, um, it's currently thirty-one dollars and forty-seven cents per keg out. And again, in comparison to Ho'olehua, Anahola, and the county, much, much higher per keg out. And that is only servicing the homestead community. That's not in partnership with, um, the county or other state facilities. That is just their small pavilion. And I do want to make note that every time we have community meetings out there, including tonight's meeting, all of our beneficiary consultations, they offer the pavilion to us at no cost to the department. And they're very willing to host things. You'll see a playground when you go there. So it's very beneficiary-centric. And yet they're paying, um, quite a bit for their, for their usage rate. Next slide. Um, covering the cost of service. So now we know what we're billing. Let's talk through what is the cost of service? What is the department actually paying to operate and maintain this system? So for water source costs, we go through Kohala Ranch Water System. Now, for those of you who are not intimately familiar with Kauai High's water system, I'll talk you through in general. What happens is water is pumped up from a groundwater well in the adjacent Ahupoa to where our Kailapa Homestead is. Um, that's where Kohala Ranch Water System is. They pump it from the ground. They have it in transmission lines. It connects to an interconnection point along the Ahupoa boundary. Once the water passes through that interconnection point, it's a metered interconnection. And the department purchases that water from Kohala Ranch Water System as our water source. Um, the department had previously dug groundwater wells up there. Neither of them came up potable, and so they would take some, you know, uh, work in order to be utilized. And that's the reason why we source from Kohala Ranch Water System. So it passes through the interconnection point. DHHL, once it comes through that, that, uh, interconnection point, is responsible for the transmission down to the homestead and to the hun, hundred and sixty-four users that are currently on that system. Um, now, the, the usage rate, I have usage rate plus the monthly fat, flat fee that the department pays. So this is what we pay directly to our water source. Um, the fiscal year twenty-three was about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, for the entire year, we averaged between twelve and sixteen thousand dollars per month is what we're paying to Koala Ranch System to purchase the water for them. Now, this, um, rate, uh, the one all the way at the top, the seven dollars, seven point zero three three six six per keg out, that is one of the highest rates in the state of Hawaii as approved by the, the Public Utilities Commission. Um, and, and that is lower than, right, than what we are charging, what we are billing our beneficiaries. Now, based on the water rate and the power cost adjustment rate, um, what we're paying at, at this time is about nine dollars and twenty-four cents and some change per keg out. So that's the actual cost of water for us to source it. Now, as far as operation, maintenance, and repair of the water system itself, we're contracted through Purle. Um, and based on our information provided by DHHL's fiscal office, if we look at FY twenty-three, it was a little over fifty-two thousand dollars for the entirety of the year. Now, that's for operation, maintenance, and repairs that popped up. In general, our monthly is about forty-one, I think it's forty-one ninety per month for the contract. And then everything that's over that is repairs and replacement, replacement, paying for labor, paying for, um, materials and equipment. Electric bill, this is what we pay to HECO, um, for the course of the year was a little over sixteen thousand dollars. And then what I don't have access to as far as broken down to a, to a figure is the labor that we receive from our, uh, district office staff. They help us with all of the billings, um, and sending out all the billings and handling all of the payments and whatnot. So that is another factor that's a bit of a question mark. Total cost, um, based on FY twenty-three is about two hundred and forty-five thousand for everything. That's inclusive of purchasing the water. Next slide. Um, we have a little bit more on cost of service. So I mentioned two hundred and forty-five thousand about is how much we're paying total, inclusive of about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, um, that we're paying to Kohala Ranch to purchase the water. So that is the bulk of the cost. Um, in FY twenty-three, DHHL billed to our hundred and sixty-four Kailapa Homestead users, uh, an excess of forty-two thousand dollars. Part of that just has to do with the formula that was used to calculate the rate system. Um, the intention of it was to break even, but there are some challenges with that. Now, um, in our HAR, in the admin rules, it does mention that we're supposed to be periodically doing a cost of service study and a water rates assessment, and the department has not fulfilled our obligation to do so. And so that's something that is captured in the planning office, um, budget. And those water rates are a high priority for us, or water studies are a high priority for us in order to better look in detail at the cost of service study um, and our water rates analysis. The water rates analysis specifically is something that we can do to ensure that we are equitable in our billing and do our best to make sure that our homesteaders are not, um, in a situation that is too much for them. Um, currently, based on, uh, or based on fiscal, the close of fiscal year twenty-three, that reserve amount, which was earmarked at about four hundred thousand dollars total. Again, that reserve was meant to cover repair, replacement, things that pop up in the operation of the system, um, was at two hundred and sixty-one thousand. So we're over halfway to the reserve amount. Um, and we are already kind of billing in excess. Next slide. So as far as this proposed subsidy, um, what we are presenting today is a two-part subsidy. Part one, waive the bimonthly base fee. And this would be applicable to both our residents, our homesteaders in Kailapa, as well as the Community Association. Um, you can see that fiscal year twenty-six and twenty-seven, each year, that's incrementally getting higher. It is a bimonthly fat, flat rate, and so it would be wa, the waiving of the six, um, bills, uh, through the course of one year. Now, I do want to remind folks that this is a temporary subsidy. Um, the onus is on the department to ensure that we complete those cost of service studies and that we update the admin rules. Now, in updating the admin rules, that's where we can put in the revised water rate schedule that can better allocate for our break-even number, um, perhaps removal of the idea of the reserve. And that will ensure a more sustainable billing system. Now, previously, when we discussed updates to the administrative rules, um, the timeline for that is usually eighteen to twenty-four months. That being said, um, planning office, um, is currently, planning office and Homestead Services Division are both doing a statewide beneficiary consultation for the purpose of updating the admin rules and have an aggressive timeline of about twelve months. And so we're hoping to kind of look at that as a pathway for us to move forward to where we wouldn't necessarily need to take eighteen to twenty-four months to update the administrative rules and to work on, uh, revised, uh, water rate schedule. So we're hoping to be more aggressive about that. Um, the second part of this is providing some rate stabilization for tiers one and two. Now, this would not be applicable to the Community Association, but it would be applicable to all of our homesteaders that live there. Um, the reason why we would only consider, uh, providing stabilization to tiers one and two is the reason why you have the tiered schedule is for water conservation. We know that, um, that is one way to kind of in, incentivize folks to be very thoughtful about how they use their water. And so in, uh, subsidizing just the first two tiers, uh, that can help folks, um, who are using con, uh, conservative amounts of water in comparison. It will help them to maintain, um, the, their current rates without having to increase every fiscal year, uh, which our beneficiaries have mentioned, you know, July one becomes this very looming thing for them, knowing that their water bill is going to be going up. Next slide. Um, as far as our proposed subsidy, there's a lot of data in the submittal. In this slide, I wanted to talk specifically about the impact felt by our homesteaders. Excuse me, and what the cost will be to the department. So impact felt by our homesteaders is highlighted in yellow. Um, based on the fiscal year twenty-six water rates, the, what our homesteaders are going to feel is a relief of about a hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents per bimonthly bill. And then based on tier one and tier two usage, now this is estimated. This is estimated, assuming that each user uses about eighteen thousand gallons um, over the course of that bimonthly period. That's based on the historic water use rate, which is about eighteen million for the entire system over the course of a year. So we divided that out by the hundred and sixty-four users. And this is what the savings they would experience. So for fiscal year twenty-six, hundred and forty-nine eighty-eight would be saved on that base rate and about twenty-two dollars and fifty cents on their usage rate. Now, if they use over that eighteen thousand gallons, um, they're not going to get much else subsidy. They'll be paying at the higher rates, and that has to do with their water consumption. For fiscal year twenty-seven, it increases. Again, that's because the water rate schedule increases. Um, but it's the same amount of subsidy that we would be doing, uh, just increasing based on that water rate schedule. Um, as far as what the department would be providing in the subsidy, hundred and sixty-nine thousand plus for fiscal year twenty-six, a little over two hundred and six thousand for fiscal year twenty-seven. Now, I would like to say that those numbers are not the actual cost to the department. That's the department's loss in billings if we were to bill fully. So that's not the actual cost. I'll remind you, fiscal year twenty-three, the cost was only two hundred and forty-three thousand. The estimated, um, amount of billings that we would get would still be over two hundred thousand, uh, if folks are paying, are using the same amount of water, paying the same amount. And so the, these, this number is what would, we would be losing in our billings, but not having to actually pay out of pocket for the operation of the system. What we would actually pay would be more in the range of thirty to forty thousand each year. Um, the source of these funds, as suggested, so for the Kauai High region, we have quite a few commercial and industrial, um, land dispositions there. We also have pastoral land dispositions. Fiscal year twenty-three, um, according to our annual report, the revenue generated in the Kauai High region was, um, over six hundred and forty thousand dollars. Currently, there are no community benefits packages, so we don't have any of those funds going or going to the region or staying with the homestead communities there. And so the suggestion is that we look at this source of funds, trust funds, that part of that money would stay with the Kauai High folks for this temporary subsidy. Next slide. So as far as next steps go, today, we're asking you to take action on whether or not you will effectuate this temporary subsidy. It's very important that the department continues to work on the implementation action steps that we outlined in the Kauai High Regional Plan. Our midterm, uh, solution is looking at adjusting the water rate schedule more permanently by updating, um, the, uh, Hawaii administrative rules. Our long-term solution is, is, well, it's multi-pronged, but I think the two largest components, one would be looking at a different source of water. If we weren't paying Kohala Ranch Water System such a high rate just to purchase the water, that would really help us to better control our water rates, and that is something that we're actively working on. Um, and then the second part is, can we look at agricultural water sources? Right now, folks are having to utilize potable water for non-potable uses. If we can find that other source, um, and look at how we can deliver both of those, potable and non-potable, I think it would be transformative for our homestead in Kailapa. Certainly transformative on their water rates. At this point, we don't have a timeframe that we'd be coming back with the midterm and the long term, but, um, I anticipate later on this year, um, we would begin with our water rate schedule and the statewide beneficiary consultations that might be needed for, um, the amendment to the admin rules. Again, we're looking at the existing statewide beneficiary consultations as a pathway to see how can we do this in an expedited way? How can we do it in the most efficient way possible? Um, I believe that is all. Next slide. Okay. Thank you so much for your time. Let me know any questions you have.
Chair. Mr. Nevis.
I'll, I'll try to make it short. Um, the, um, yeah, one thing is to work on surface water. If we can find surface water, I know we walked through Wailea the other day, and we have a source for surf, surface water for the development there. Um, uh, the other thing is, uh, when you do go over your administrative rules, we have to have specific rules for our backflow preventer, because right now, it says you're supposed to maintain it. Nobody knows how to maintain it. So that might have to be given to a contractor or get somebody in the homestead that understands how to certify them, and they can go around and certify for a fee or whatever we need to do. Um, the, the, the other thing is, is to reduce water rates, and, and I've been advocating for this for a long time, uh, to the detriment of my, my farm community. Uh, we have large lots, forty-six lots, and there's only one person actually fully farming. Uh, some of those lots run from three acres to, I think the largest is about sixteen acres with nothing on it. So I've advocated to the department to try to look at, um, find out, even a lot of them have homes on it. You have, you have a home, we'll divide your lots. We'll put people on, because more people on, we, we reduce the rate. So I think it's important to try to continue to move that on. And the rest of the lots, instead of going to farm lots, is to, uh, subsistence ag lots, a lot smaller that people can use. Either put a home on it, you know, one, two-acre lot is big enough for them to do it. A lot of our three-acre lots are, are empty. It's, it's pitiful, and it affects the water rates.
Yeah.
Like to see that reduced. Look forward to your assessment of the, of the system. I, I know you guys have been busy with other things, but, uh, appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. If I can make, um, one comment, I know that, um, Kalani will likely discuss it. Um, but they do have plans to award some of the vacant lots.
Yeah.
I believe it's in the low twenties, maybe around twenty-two or twenty-four. So there are some vacant lots in Kauai High. Um, the department has quite a few acres, and if we look at it from a land use designation, there's, um, you know, thousands of acres that we could actually develop for residential, and it's water that is our constraint. So they kind of go hand in hand, and I really appreciate you mentioning that.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Any other comments, questions? Now, we have some, Commissioner Kalani.
Just a comment. Um, so are we, uh, are the beneficiaries, beneficiaries of Kailapa supportive of this?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we had, um, Shauna here earlier. She's on the board for, um, the Kailapa Community Association. We did go through beneficiary consultation as a part of the regional plan update. And so that's a great question. When folks were voting for their priority projects, um, we had a hundred, a hundred and five participants, and they have a certain number of votes, you know, five votes for each one. Over fifty percent of all votes cast were for water as a priority project. And so fifty percent of those who participated, fifty percent of the votes, uh, prioritized water. And so water is very heavily. And so water is very heavily the most important priority. And the temporary subsidy was captured. I mean, we captured it as best we could in the regional plan. It was more of a line item. This really dove into all of the details of it. So this is more effectuating that initial line item idea. And so, yes, we did have a lot of beneficiary support. It went through four beneficiary consultation meetings. And I also sent the submittal and the agenda to everyone who participated, to all the community association folks and those who participated in the regional plan with instructions on how they could give testimony or positive or negative. So tried to make sure that we're very transparent and gave lots of opportunity for engagement.
Thank you. Not we have do, we do have some people that want to testify, Shauna Kukui.
Shauna Kukui, I sit on the Board of Directors as the president. Okay, that better?
Yes.
Okay. Shauna Kukui, I sit on the Board of Directors as the current president. I'm also a resident down in Kaillapa. As a board member, speaking on behalf of the board, we fully support item G one. As a resident, I'm a single parent. I have two young boys. And my water bill is the same cost as my my car payment, right? So it's 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 a pretty hard pill to swallow when you got to pay your water bill every month. And that's on a, you know, a single income for my household. So and for our community, I think we're really dependent on this right now as a financial to relieve some of the financial burden for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, testify, Giorgio Tanimoro.
Thank you. Sorry, I came late this morning. We had all the goats on the roadway. We had all the Department of Transportation bulldozing the area where the flood was. Traffic was backed up all the way. With this item on C one, she did a good job. Okay, and I'm here to support this subsidy. Thank you very much. However, why I wanted to make a testimony is because the report doesn't go far enough. And I would like your consideration of the points that I want to bring up. And that is, I moved there in nineteen eighty five. And in nineteen eighty five, we already had a problem with the water department delivering water to our subdivision. Okay, so one of the things that's listed going forward as the steps there is getting water from the commercial area over Honocohua to Kaillapa. Okay, so never happened. And we still asking for that one. It's the cheapest way, it's the fastest way. Okay. What happened in between, the background does not say, but the department had built a million gallon reservoir. And the Department of Water Supply to authority, and they turned it over to the fire department. And what's confusing to us there is when you get fire, you send the helicopter, they take them from the ocean, and we fight the fire. And then they have all the bulldozers line up on the road with the binoculars. Okay, so but they get this water tank. It's on the other side of the Honocohua Bridge. And so that is a viable thing that we are asking for. I'd also like to say that there's a a request I have made continually for the last at least five years is to review the rate of charges for the revenue generating so that we would have funding to do stuff like doing our water, because we were already told it's going to be expensive. Didn't happen. They get a better rate than we would, you know. And so we'd like your consideration to include in the rate charges a consideration for our infrastructure. The one that was proposed, it's not going to work, not for Kauai High. Okay. I did observe in the community center a listing in in the paperwork that addresses fire risk. It does not include seventy two acres that the commission has approved for our recreational. I knew that would happen. But if I may, can I finish it really fast?
Okay, you got a couple minutes.
Thank you. Fire risk, but it does not include the seventy two acres that we have across the highway. So from the bridge, it only goes across the road to fight fire on that side. Otherwise, we're going to have this helicopter flying back and forth, back and forth. Okay, but the reason for the the tank, the reservoir tank, was for the water for the beneficiaries. And the fire department still does not, you know, that listing of fires that we've had in Kauai High, they haven't used it. So I don't know, going forward, you might please include that into the next steps. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, okay, the exploration wells. She did just explain that Kohala Ranch is where we get our water from. Kohala Ranch sits on an aquifer. Okay. The aquifer half is Hawaiian homes and half is Kohala Ranch. So we buying the same water, except we don't have piping on Hawaiian homes. And so I'd like to include that as part of this section that does say Kohala Ranch. I'd also like to include the Keahana Ditch, which is coming up. I'd also like to include there is a Honocohua well that's on the Kona side of the Honocohua gouge. Again, Honocohua, it has to come across in order to address the regional plan that you guys gave for expanding beneficiary residential agriculture general leases. Otherwise, you can't do any of that. So we need the water going forward. Okay, there's a listing of places that you can go to that is in your tables. It does not include, and I'd like to have included, is the Lalamilo ten million gallon water tank, which we did discuss a long time ago, that we were at the conference and I had asked, but we were told no. Okay, so I'd like to put that on. Okay, the other thing I wanted to add on is a beneficiary consultation to Senator Richard's new legislation about building a hydroelectric water facility. All we know is the senator told us that's what he's going to propose. Is that on Hawaiian homes? Is that on Kahua Ranch, because they can get it? Or is that part of the revocable permit that he's using from Hawaiian homes? We have no clue. And so we're asking for a beneficiary consultation for the community so we can understand that. Because perhaps that funding could be used by Hawaiian homes to fund, you know, future development and help us first in Kaillapa. The other method I would like to bring up that the Kauai High Harbor is now into expanding the harbor. And one of the deals they want to do is make an extra lane on the highway so they can make a good turn. Otherwise, they take out the railing a lot. Every time the truck come by, they take out the railing, bringing it coming out. So they want to make a better turn. Usually, well, let me explain. When you come to Kauai High, there's a two-lane road, no shoulder, no shoulder.
Giorgio, can you, Giorgio, can you kind of sum it up? We got a couple more, we got more.
They're going to fill up the drainage canal. And that means where we were flooding the last time, where the water going, it going back up, right? So if you guys would consider pounding, because we had that before in the old days. That's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next testifier, G Fallon.
Okay, I'm Gilbert Falau. I'm with the Kaillapa subdivision. I'm also on the board. Good morning. Who is it? Still morning?
It's afternoon already.
Okay, good afternoon. I want to bring up the topic of the different sources. First of all, I support putting up the subsidy, not putting off. I support the subsidy. And I think that'll give us time to, again, for us to work together on how to solve this issue. So the longer it takes us, I think the longer the subsidies should stay in effect. I want to bring up the case of Kahua Ranch now. That's an interesting case that I ran across. And it has to do with the Koha Ranch Limited versus Hostess. This was in nineteen fifty nine. And it's kind of a standstill right now where they're leasing a whole part of Kaillapa subdivision. An interesting thing about it, Kaillapa subdivision is a Aho Kuaa, and it's rare you have a subdivision that's an Aho Kuaa, and you have Hawaiians in it. So in that, in that sense, we have a, we can set an example of how the whole system worked. Now, at the top of that Aho Kuaa is where the water starts. If you read that case, and then there's a forest line. I mean, there's a forest reserve, then the Aho Kuaa comes down. Now, my understanding is that Koha Ranch leased from the forest line down to the eight hundred foot level. The width of the Aho Kuaa, there's quite a bit of land. I think it crosses the the while a mountain road. So they also have more land on the bottom part. Now, we have a law that we can get the land back that's rarely used. What is it called? Where you can just take it back. You can ask for the water nicely. If not, you can just take it back. It's rarely ever used, but I think it should be used. Because that would open up more lots for residential agriculture. You can even start building houses. Well, I don't want to make it sound so simple. Up on the mountain road, this you have the access to the lot. We don't have a right away to the top of our of our subdivision from the mountain road. So you can solve by the road. I know it all seems easy, but I'm saying by doing that one big thing, taking up this case, and you you have the responsibility to do it, just follow your water policy plan.
Thank you very much. Okay, next testifier, Kayenna Peterson.
My name is Kayenna Peterson, and I am a beneficiary on Kaillapa. And I'm seeing as everybody had said everything I wanted to say. And it is, I paid four hundred dollars. I'm by myself a month for my water bill, and that is disgraceful. And I just wanted to support, have the commission support this this bill. And that is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? If not, did we make a motion? Could I entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor say hi.
Hi, hi.
Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Follow commissioners.
We'll be fast. Item G two. Recommended motion in action is that the Hawaiian Homes Commission issue a finding of no significant impact declaration based on the final environmental assessment for the North Corner Wells Project. June now as well, site North Corner, island of Ovi, and the TMK is listed in the submittal. Louis will be giving a very, very quick presentation.
The quickest.
Thank you.
Kind of a motion while waiting.
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Next slide. Thank you so much. Quickly, Hawaiian Homes Commission's role is to make a determination. Staff's role to make sure that we've met all of the compliance. Next step, next slide, sorry. Project site, we've talked about this before previously. I brought the draft to you folks in in January. So we talked about this. This is our need to develop additional water sources for North Corner. This final environmental assessment is for the Giannoulias property, also called the Waiaha property in Honolulu. Next slide. As far as the project background, this is meant to serve DHHL's fourteen hundred acres in the North Corner region. After we complete the current development for Village Four, we'll have used all of our water credits. We need to gather more water credits. And the pathway presented to us by Kami DWS is water source development, groundwater wells. Next slide. Proposed action is developing a groundwater well here on the property. The remaining acreage can be utilized, will be a part of the DHHL's inventory. But in order for us to complete the land acquisition, we have to finish all of our chapter three, four, three compliance. So that's why I'm coming to you before we have completed acquisition. Next slide. Compliance with chapter three, four, three is basically looking at all of the affected environment. We have a handful of technical studies that we've done to really understand what the proposed action is and what the potential impacts are. In addition to that, we've done a pretty robust Kapa'akai framework analysis. Preliminary drafts were included in the appendices for the environmental assessment. We're also going to be doing more with our Kapa'akai in the coming months for acquisition of the second property, the KS Wells. Next slide. This is a list of the parties that we consulted. The main comments that we got when we put out the draft EA, so it's published in the environmental notice, was published back in January, thirty day comment period. The main comments that we got was for one of the graphics that had been projected. The boundaries were projected inaccurately. We were able to revise that. Other than that, from a handful of our real estate agents, most of the comments that we got were very supportive of the project. The next few slides, which why don't we go ahead and skip through those? If we can skip down to slide ten. So the previous slides just Um so the previous slides just talk about the potential for impact and our mitigation measures. No changes to those, they're the same ones that we presented to this commission in January. Um potential impacts for the cultural resources and practices, a lot of this again was sourced from the Kapaa Kai framework analysis. That document is still in the process of being concluded, we do have a preliminary draft that's um going to be going out for public review soon. Um no changes to the mitigation measures proposed in there, and those mitigation measures are meant to um protect our native rights and practices uh that happen within the vicinity of the project. Um next slide, if we can skip down to fifteen. Oh, perfect. So there are thirteen significance criteria, each of these need to be addressed either with technical studies or um other data. We've gone through all of them, um there's no change in the substance or contents, uh contact, content of the document from January. Next slide, the final EA summary, um we expect a finding of no significant impact. That's what the data shows us, that's what our mitigation measures are meant to ensure. Um it is important that the project as it moves forward does implement all of the mitigation measures, including best management practices, biological control measures, cultural and archaeological monitoring, as well as all the mitigation measures to protect our native rights and for our native practitioners. Next slide, um as far as the next steps. If you folks uh approve the final environmental assessment uh and with a determination of a Fonzie finding of no significant impact. Um we would move forward with finalizing the acquisition of the property, which is set to close in June of this year. Um next steps would be designing and constructing a test well, confirming test well results, obtaining seaworm permits, designing and constructing a production well, um as well as storage and transmission lines required by the county, and moving forward with a water agreement. All so that we can continue in pursuit of building out our homestead lands, those fourteen hundred acres in Quanah. That's all, thank you folks.
Any questions? All those in favor say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, one last shot, uh very short item, um agenda item H one, approve of transfer of Hawaiian Home Receipts Fund's balance. Jeff? Oh, excuse me, Kate.
Aloha, Katie Lambert, presenting item number H one. This is the usual quarterly request to approve the transfer of receipts deposited in the Hawaiian Home Receipts Fund as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to the Hawaiian Home General Loan Fund.
Okay, can I have a motion?
So move.
Uh any discussion? Not, all those in favor say hi.
Hi.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, we're gonna take a break here for lunch, uh recess, uh we'll reconvene at
One thirty.
One, one thirty? Okay, one, one thirty, thank you.
The one that. You ready?
Yeah.
Yes. Hey, we're back in session. We kind of missed a testifier on G two regarding the approval of the final environmental assessment regarding that well site in North Kona. So at this time, I'd like to call Bo Kahui to the stand.
This is from Bo.
To the table.
Oh, aloha again, commissioners. My name is Bo Kahui and I serve as the executive director, founder of Laipua Committee Development Corporation. I reside at the villages of Laipua. At the outset, thank you for acknowledging and accepting, I think, the staff's position to approve item G two, the final environmental assessment and the declaration of findings of no significant impact. I scanned the nearly thousand pages last night. In the review of the document, section seven does reflect my comments to, under the cultural surveys, my comments to to the process. I commend this commission to doing this. We brought this initiative before two other commission, two other leaders, and they did not have the foresight to understand the need for water. And I thank this commission for for that because without water, there is no house, no water, no home, period. My daughter has undivided interest of work in Laipua. And there's no water. With this initiative now, she has an opportunity to live out my legacy, my brother's legacy, of which she attained her lease. So thank you for that. I want to comment and kind of dovetail into G G one because the important thing about what we did was we sought the water initiative. I went and got the Geonales guys on board in part because Tom Nance, the water expert, the water engineer, told me to go over there, told me to go see this guy, go ask him for water. He got plenty of water. And we struck a deal, struck a deal almost 10 years ago. That's how long it's been taking just to get water for us. I don't understand that. But for for Diane Cunnealy, and I'll dovetail into that initiative, you know, I prove approving the subsidies is one thing, but finding the water is more important because in the end, the water going to be more costly. It's going to cost more for them. It's gonna if the price of that water is going to go up as as Kohala Ranch seemed necessary, you know, the subsidies not going to be enough. I know there's water along the highway with the county. The county should be working with the department and the department likewise with the county to access that water because it is the shortest route to the solution. That is the solution. The infrastructure cost is high. We're talking about how many different homes, a total number of homes in Kauai High, but that doesn't mean that will limit you guys' expansion in the area. You can, I mean, you've got thousands of acres over there. I mean, you can you can broaden, I think, your opportunity for housing in that particular area. So I sense that. And because the county have access and been serving our commercial areas in in that area along the highway is an opportunity, I think, that needs to be vetted. I mean, with resolve. With that said, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bo.
Thank you, Bo.
Okay, next item, G three. For information only, Native Wine Rehabilitation Fund review revenue updates, revenue update, Andrew Troy, and everybody's Sherry and Jonathan, sure.
Aloha, commissioners. For information only, item G three, G three, department is providing an update on the Native Wine Rehabilitation Fund revenue. This was requested in part by Commissioner Kalakini several commission meetings ago, and it's a good opportunity to explain what the Native Wine Rehabilitation Fund is and how it has performed over the years. So with me today, I have Dr. Jonathan Wikeke Shoyer and Shiri Kaanana, our water program specialists, who will be giving the update.
Hello, Mike Akko. So you have in attached to the brief submittal, a draft report regarding the Native Wine Rehabilitation Fund that.
Jonathan, before you go any further, I did want to congratulate you on getting approved for the West Maui Commission, Water Commission. We appreciate all your involvement in fighting for the department.
Mahalo, Nuri. I did pass through committee this Friday. The county council will take their final vote. One will hope that will be pro forma, but I will go just in case. So thank you very much, Chair. It's an honor, truly an honor to work with this department and for the beneficiaries on these critical issues. So water is a prominent, but not the only figure or feature of the Native Wine Rehabilitation Fund. And so this is a brief report, a brief review of some of the key findings of this report that's been delivered to you in draft form in your submittal. If you go to the next slide. If you're not super familiar with the Native Wine Rehabilitation Fund, which is a grant making program currently that the department operates and awards monies to beneficiary organizations around the Paeina, it has its origins in the original wine homes commission act. This is an image of the congressional record where the original act was passed that set aside 30% of the receipts received from leasing lands for sugarcane and for water licenses under any provision of law into a fund that was to put out loans to allow homesteaders to settle the land. This was the original main source of funding for implementation of the wine homes commission act. If you go to the next slide. But why? Why was this the source of funds? Now, I apologize if this is something that you know well about already, but it's actually worth, in case folks who are listening don't know about it, to understand why was the act funded through water leasing and sugarcane. This image is from the congressional report on a hearing that was held in December of nineteen twenty. As Kuhiel was trying past a decade already to get the wine homes commission act passed by Congress as an amendment to the organic act that had created the territorial government. And so in December of twenty or nineteen twenty, a whole bunch of people travel all the way to Washington DC to testify before the Senate Committee on the Interior. If you go to the next slide. And one of the key people who comes to testify is this guy named AGM Robertson. He was closely allied with the fifth generation holi in Hawaii, closely allied with the forces who overthrew the monarchy, went on to become chief justice of the territorial supreme court, but then actually retired, re-entered into private practice, and he traveled to Washington DC on behalf of Parker Ranch, which stood to lose at least 50,000 acres of land to the new homesteading program. But what was really interesting was, he didn't go, as you might expect, to say, hey, this proposed act is going to negatively affect my client, and we might not be able to branch as much. His entire argument before the Senate Committee on the Territories was that this act should not be passed because it was discriminatory against whites in the territory. And so he says repeatedly throughout these congressional hearings, you know, this is taking money from the pockets of the white taxpayers in the territory to give it to these so-called Hawaiians. Delegate Klauniana Ole has to sort of get his word into the committee chair and says, you know, this is not correct, but the AGM Robertson doubles down, if you go to the next slide, and just said, you know, I don't care what you're saying. It doesn't make any difference where this one million dollars comes from. It's coming out of the white taxpayers' pockets. He's trying to make this argument that says, even if you're taking money from land leases and water licenses, that means that the white taxpayers in the territory are not getting that revenue, and therefore this is a discriminatory act. And he tried to defeat it. Of course, he was unsuccessful. But one of the reasons why is this the original funding mechanism was, well, by tying it to sugar land leases and water licenses, in fact, those very same lands and waters that were excluded from being available for Hawaiian homesteading, it was Kuhiel was doing a number of very sophisticated negotiating tactics. First of all, he was taking away the ability to say you were using tax monies in a discriminatory way. But he was also saying, okay, if you guys, sugar companies are going to hand hold on to all these prime lands, we're at least going to benefit from them. We're going to benefit from the land lease revenue and the water license revenue. And it very clearly spoke to the fact that these lands had been crowned in kingdom lands two decades earlier. And there were way to try and tie the rehabilitation project to the success of the overall economy in Hawaii. If you go to the next slide. In nineteen seventy eight, the Constitutional Convention proposed amendments to the state constitution, which took this provision, this original provision that gets 30% of sugar land revenue and 30% of water license revenues and modernizes it creates the Native Wine Rehabilitation Fund as the focus of those of to receive those revenues and also adds in a couple important things, recognizing already in nineteen seventy eight that the end of sugar might be on the horizon. It said, even if these lands are used for something else in the future, we want revenue related to those lands. And we want it really clear that it's water of any kind of use should be revenue should be coming to the department. So a number of years ago, the wine homes commission had at either through the state auditor or through the Department of Wine Home Lands on request, had done audits and other reviews of the native wine rehabilitation fund. But what's really clear has happened over time is that with the decline of sugar, the amount of revenue coming into the fund has declined precipitously. So a few years ago, the wine homes commission said, we could just do an audit again. But if you start to spend $100,000 or more auditing a revenue that's going in decline, you're not necessarily getting to the most important question. So instead, they asked, they put out a contract to do overall research on the native wine rehabilitation fund, prioritize immediate actions that could be taken to address it, propose a new audit scope that would look more broadly at the fund, and then also develop an advocacy plan for increasing revenues. So I alluded to this, what's happened to revenue over time. If you click through. So I have more updated information from fiscal that I actually got on Friday. And I will include this in the final report. This is the figures from nineteen two thousand one through two thousand twenty five, but it shows the general trend, other than a couple blips from land sales, mostly to Lealei when Lance went to HHFDC. Land revenue has been steady to declining to the NHRF over many, many years, over decades. If you go to the next slide. And it's happened with water license revenues. So there's been various studies that have been done before. However, one of the things we did was we reviewed all the studies that have been done and identified which findings and recommendations from previous studies have been implemented and which ones have not. There's only been two findings from previous studies that have been fully implemented. The other findings from previous studies and audits have only been partially implemented. If you go to the next slide. So the previous audits and other studies, they focused on the existing entitlements, sugar land revenue and water licenses from existing leases and licenses. They made specific recommendations on how to work with DLNR to validate data. They made some recommendations on how DLNR's procedures could be validated, but they did not address the sort of the elephant in the room, the ongoing decline of the sugar industry and hence the decline of revenues to the NHRF. So one of the requirements of this contract was to review all the audits. And so we went through every finding in all of the previous studies and grouped them together. And so there's a table in chapter three of the report that says, here's the things that already on record that DLNR should be doing or DHHL should be doing to try and document and fully more fully get existing revenue, standard revenue, fully documented to the NHRF. But if you go for the next thing, and this is sort of the punchline of the report. The main thing that was asked of us was to say, well, so what can we do going forward? How are we going to increase revenue to the native wine rehabilitation fund? And the two primary recommendations, first of all, is to update and get the state of Hawaii to actually much more aggressively issue and require water licenses. And then secondly, to also through legislative means, expand the potential base for NHRF entitlements. So the specific entitlement under water licenses says that we're entitled to state receipts from all water licenses. And water licenses are supposed to include any use of water, water in any state, whether it's hot through geothermal or cold in a water well, whether it's brackish water or salt water or reclaimed water and from any facility. What the Department of Land and Natural Resources has done, however, for the last few decades, and this shows the steady to declining portion of NHRF funds that are coming in water licenses, is that they've only transmitted to the department water licenses that have converted into revocable permits. So the East Maui water licenses, some small ones in Kahului on this island, a couple on the island of Kauai. If there's not a license in place, they haven't been pursuing new licenses. So Hawaiian Homes beneficiary testified on the Kailapa water item earlier, and he made a reference to the Kahana ditch. The Kahana ditch takes water from the Kohala Mountains, from state owned land, and delivers that water to, among others, Kahuala Ranch, has done so for decades. There's no license in place. So there's no revenue that's charged by the state and hence no revenue that goes into the native wine rehabilitation fund. Through our advocacy earlier, we've also said this, they also, the land division of DLNR has said, well, the water has to be coming from state lands. All water in Hawaii is public trust. It's a very questionable interpretation of the law. But even if that's the case, we pointed out in Homakua on this island that when a private landowner was coming in front of the Water Commission because he had built a diversion across the stream and was diverting water onto his property for a hydroelectric project, turned out he hadn't gotten a permit. So he came in for an after the fact permit. And we said, he should also be required to get a water license. And the state said, well, no, you know, half the stream is owned by the state and half is owned by the private entity. We're not going to charge a water license. So. We're not going to charge a water license. So the first recommendation is that if we really believe what the Supreme Court has said and what our constitution says, that water in Hawaii is a public trust and the government is the only holder of the water. And that, I mean, when you've got to remember, right? When you read section two twenty-one of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act and when it talks about publicly owned water and government-owned water, it was written at a time when we thought that we're such a thing as privately owned water, but there's not. So we should apply the law as it exists today. And we should be entitled to some sort of licensing fee whenever anybody's taking water for any non-public trust purpose. The second thing, and I just want to point this out, that like Kuhiyo, and I referenced this before, tied the success of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act and its implementation to what was the biggest industry in Hawaii at the time? Sugar. So if sugar succeeded, the department was supposed to succeed. The program was supposed to succeed. But of course, it's now been decades since sugar has been the major industry in our islands. So the other things that could be done, if you go to the next slide, would be various tying it to tourism, transient accommodation tax, tying it to the various green fees that the current governor is supporting or other public land trust entitlements. Another way to think about this is that even before, you know, decades before the existence of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and its entitlement to twenty percent of public land trust revenue, what Kuhiyo did essentially was saying, hey, these are former Crown and Kingdom lands. They should support fundamentally the success of this program. Now, they were tied at the time to former sugar lands because that was the biggest and most money-making thing in the kingdom and in the territory, but that's not the case anymore. So. Next steps, this is a draft report that's now in your receipt as well as staff's receipt. We will incorporate any proposed changes. We will finalize the report. This will then form the basis for the department to do two things. First of all, do request for an updated audit with a revised scope reflective of all the previous studies that's been done before, but also would work with your legislative efforts to pursue a new advocacy program to sort of continue this part of Kuhiyo's legacy that was given to us in the original act, but to update it so that we can have a steady stream of revenue going into the future. That's it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Jonathan, you know, one of the things that was very clear was, you know, explaining the history, that there was a intent on the ranches to exclude all this very fertile lands that, you know, were originally government and Crown lands. So in the creation of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act, I mean, that was really what has plagued the program that we've been kind of burdened with lands that are not very productive, very expensive to develop. So the one thing that we're trying to do this session is we put in a bill to have the state start to transfer good lands to the department. Now, you know, this would actually be, I guess, an area where now we got all this decreased revenues from the sugarcane lands as well as the water revenues that in lieu of that, maybe we could use that as a justification, not only to correct what was done to prevent the program from, I guess, succeeding, but more so as a reflection of the the less revenues that were generated. Now, is there anything in your research or understanding of the law that would prevent the state? Granted, the Hawaiian Homes Commission specifically excludes these sugarcane lands, but what's to prevent the state? Now that their task would carry out the program to put some of these sugarcane lands into our inventory.
Under state law, I don't believe that there's anything whatsoever.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
From doing. I mean, there's the issues about inventory and what the Office of Native Hawaiian Relations has has opined about whether they become part of the inventory or not, but I don't think that there's anything whatsoever that stops the state from transferring any lands that they have to our program if they're going to be good for homesteading.
Yeah, because I do want to maybe use this logic as well as, I guess, how the program is kind of going downhill from the lack of this native wine rehab funds, not downhill, but you know, as a replacement, why not give us the lands? Similarly, like right now, we're going in for six hundred million under House Bill six oh six. But it's a very difficult time, especially with the federal situation and all that. So in lieu of giving us money, let's give us lands.
Of course, I prefer both, right?
Yeah. We're going to go for both, but we've already identified a bunch of lands. I've asked Riley Kornanakua to identify all the different state lands throughout the islands that would really kind of, you know, help our program move forward. So I did talk with the governor, supportive, the different department heads are not, but you know, we'll try to get over that. And that's why legislation might be required, but I just want to, you know, I think what you're presenting is very relevant to why they should. Not only when you look at the history of why there was a specific intent, unfortunately Parker Ranch, but and others, to exclude all these good lands. So let's kind of switch that around. So the next hundred years, we got an inventory that is really going to be exciting to develop.
I, I think it would address some of the, right? So every time I read about the history of the passage of the act, I'm inspired by Kuhiyo's ability to negotiate under impossible circumstances, both with local elites and, you know, a Congress that was not, say doubling over about with their support for native people, right? And so he made compromises to get things through, but now we have the chance to go back and sort of address some of those less good compromises. And I would not want to lose sight of those, a steady stream of revenue for NHRF.
Right.
And get the lands that will allow people to successfully settle. Regarding seeking lands, one other way in which the history of the Native Hawaiian Rehabilitation Fund and the department's attempts to get funding from it might be relevant to your current task is that over the years, quite a few state lands have been set aside to county entities. And when that has happened, the department was largely lost any ability to secure any funds from those lands, regardless of what they're used for. That also means that a huge amount of lands that might be suitable for the department's housing purposes, title is held by the state, but operative control is held by the counties. And maybe they've received some of those lands, but they're not actually using them for their intended purpose. It's another place to look when you're doing your search.
We were actually looking at that also. The sitting count of Honolulu, they're in the process of actually with Tommy Waters and Estakiaina, they moved forward that Kalahail transfer. And we've identified a bunch of county lands and some that are, you know, kind of in residential areas, Diamond Head, other Neo Valley, all kind of really nice locations where we're going to go after. You know, it, what's nice about it is the timing, especially with the environment, a very supportive legislators, as well as a governor, as well as a mayor. Now is the time to really take advantage of it. So fortunately, history has kind of changed. Rather than the, you know, the powerful landowners or ranchers and stuff, we now have a very strong group of advocates, which includes yourself, John. And so we're excited about it and we're going to be pursuing a lot more in the next couple of years. We've got any lands you're talking about. And not just for homesteading, also for revenue production. There's lands like next to Hilo Airport that we're going after. So we need revenue and especially where it makes sense. Some of these lands are adjacent to our lands. And so if we can consolidate, it makes it a lot better to get out and try to lease it out and generate revenue. So anyway, this presentation, does anybody have any questions about what you just presented? Commissioner Kalakini?
So Jonathan, thank you very much for that presentation. On this report that you're working on for us, when, how much more time do we have to comment on it? I mean, it's quite a bit of info and I couldn't read it in the last couple of days.
Yeah, yeah. Andrew?
I, I think we, there's no timeline associated with the finalization of the report. I mean, obviously you want to finalize it sooner rather than later, but I do think we can provide yourself as well as other commissioners additional time to submit comments.
Appreciate that, Andrew. No, that's very enlightening and very informative and I really appreciate it. And really great what Chair's initiatives with the state and the governor, but yes, great, great work.
Yeah, you know, you're coming about the forty thousand acres that was susceptible to homesteading that Parker Ranch wanted to protect. You know, and I was aware that, you know, they had sent lawyers and individuals you mentioned up to Congress. They're the ones that oppose, you know, this, and we're supporting the fifty percent, or actually a hundred percent that be Hawaiian in order to become a homestead. That was on them.
Yeah.
They opposed the one thirty-second. So the fifty was really a compromise. But hopefully when the change of leadership and again, the realigning of the stars with Michael Connie over there now, let's see if we can kind of work with Parker Ranch. That'd be exciting. Yeah. Any other comments or, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, the next item, C2, for information only, status report of DHHL enforcement unit efforts and statistics. David Hope.
Good afternoon, Chair Watson and Hawaiian Home Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
David Hope, Enforcement Unit Administrator, just providing monthly updates and this covers February tenth through March ninth. Within this timeframe, we've only received five requests for investigations, bringing the total for the calendar year to twenty. Our, as far as correspondence goes, we sent sixteen official correspondences to various beneficiaries for multiple reasons. And, you know, I'd like to thank, you know, our legal assistant, Casey Corpus, for doing that. She really stays on top of it. Also, during this timeframe, we completed six property inspections with the Department of Health, in which we had to go follow up on some complaints about that. We continue to do our beneficiary engagement. On March tenth, we sent out our monthly email to a total of sixty-five recipients. And again, we continue to try and go push having that relationship as much as we can. And it's pretty much the summary, but I did also want to address, you know, during one of the testimonies, somebody brought up ghost guns and I felt it was important to kind of address that. With our unit, when we get reports of that, the first thing that we do is we, we go follow up with the police department and we go make sure that we want to get as much details as possible. The first thing we want to determine is if that shooting occurred on a DHHL lease parcel because I believe this fact is critical because DHHL's purview has to be tied to a lease, meaning it has to be on a residential property in order for us to have any possible oversight of that situation. If it doesn't, we obviously, we're going to continue to get as much information as we can, see if we can support the police, support the NSWs to try and make the homestead community safer and overall community safer. But I believe it's, it's very critical to kind of establish that point because based off of what we see, obviously the shootings are, you know, never a good thing. But I would not say that it is a DHHL homestead problem. Our homesteads are open to the public, meaning anybody can access the homesteads. What we've seen in most of these cases are it's individuals that the event happens within the homestead and not necessarily beneficiaries or homesteaders, it's tied specifically to them. In the cases which they could be, we'll again, continue to support the police, let them do their job first. And if there is a way that we can possibly tie any type of criminal activity to a lease, we're, we're trying to be as creative as possible to do that for those, you know, egregious situations and you know, within the next few months, we'll probably be seeing a case come before the commission in which, again, we're really going to try and extend ourselves to really try and make a criminal situation, see if we can make it a lease violation because of the safety that it put the surrounding community in. So again, just wanted to clear that up and make sure that everybody knows that these types of situations, we do monitor them as best as possible and we are trying to, you know, stay on top of it and in ways that the department is legally able to do so. Any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Kalakini? Yeah, David, mahalo for the update. I just want to share with everyone that Enforcement Unit has been very proactive. I know east of Hawaii, we have lots of, it's not lots, but some activity and you guys have been very good about it and I appreciate all the work that you and your, the whole team has been for it. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Yes. David, thanks for all the work that you do. I, I'm glad that you brought up the the testimony on, on ghost guns and crime, et cetera, et cetera, because one of the things that you've allowed associations to do is look at that pilot project that you, you created with HPD Partnership and have shown the way for associations to partner so that they can avoid this sort of thing. And it's a good model. So if people will take you up on that initiative, we don't have to wait until bad things happen in the neighborhood and then ask for help. You, you've enabled and empowered some of our associations to be proactive in that activity. So yeah, good on you and keep up the good work.
Thank you. And yeah, any associations out there, again, please reach out to us. We'd like to have contact. We were more than willing to come meet and again, try and explain, you know, the department's oversight versus law enforcement and really, really clarify those roles. I'd say generally speaking, we do have a pretty solid relationship with all the county police departments. So just again, bridging that last gap of having those close ties to the associations and NSWs, I believe is the, is a critical piece that is missing in some areas because we want to jump on these issues as quickly as possible before they, they blow up into something much bigger.
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next agenda item, D1, HSD Status Report. Juan Garcia.
Hello, Commissioners. Again, D1 is for your information only. It's the HSD Status Reports, specifically the Homestead Lease and Application Totals and Monthly Activity Reports, as well as the Loan Delinquency Report. I'd be glad to respond to any questions you may have at this time.
No question.
I just, I just got a, just a quick observation and a question. You know, you're, you're undermanned and you've got all these demands on, on your particular division. How are you doing with staffing?
Staffing is doing well. We're conducting interviews to fill some vacant positions. Again, we're hopeful that the legislature will fund some of the unfunded positions that we have as well as approving those additional staffing that we do need on the neighbor islands as well as on Oahu.
So talk numbers, would you please want numbers? How many staff do you have? How many are you absent? You know, how much are you down?
I can provide that for you.
Okay, yeah, good.
Commissioner Kalakini? Just a quick follow-up, not, not just for home services, but I think for the entire department. If not enough to be today, but how many approved positions we have, how many are funded? I think that would be good to know because I know we've been following that for a long time.
Uh, yeah, I, you just happened to have somebody in the audience that knows all that. Don't look too happy about it, but that's the case.
So I don't know what specifically Juan's numbers are in HSD, but as an overall picture to answer Commissioner Kalakini, we have two hundred generally funded authorized position, authorized positions. Nineteen of those are unfunded. So we basically have one hundred and eighty-one authorized and funded positions of Of those, we hover at about, at any time, at any given point in time, because it's always fluid, at about 135. So, you know, people, we, we hire people and then people retire or move on. So we seem to be kind of at this one between 130, 135.
So does that mean we're like understaffed by 50 to 60?
Yeah. Yeah. Because, so we can't, so because it's almost a zero sum game, so we can't, we can't seem to hire people at a rate that's more than the rate at which people are either are retiring or leaving us at some, for some reason.
Maybe you can mention the situation we have up at the legislature, where we're trying to get the 16 and the 19.
Yeah. So, yeah, and so the budget just crossed over from the House to the Senate. So the governor had done through a governor's message, an additional 200 million for personal services specifically.
Two million.
Yeah. And so, and that was meant to help us restore funding for the 19 authorized and unfunded positions. And then the balance of which we could create and fund 16 new positions. And so that's what Juan was referring to. When it passed out of the House Finance Committee, that $2 million was reduced to $1. And that's, that was just at the beginning of when Cherry Yamashita presented the budget. He had indicated in kind of a preamble that a reduction to $1 just means there might be something that they're working on, or maybe they're looking at something that's in a different appropriation bill. I don't think that was our particular, but there, there's just something that they needed to work on. And of course, so it's kind of like a placeholder. And then of course, we're going to go to, WAM is having their hearing on Tuesday on the budget. And so we'll see what happens there. And then, you know, there's a whole process through conference, right? That we'll have to stay informed and in touch with the respective money committees on our personnel request.
Any other questions, Chair?
Commissioner Nevis?
Yeah, Juan, I'm looking at your, your delinquency report and it looks like we've got DHHL loans 151 and then we have 89 in HUD reassignments. That's for a total of 240, 180 days in the rear. Hopefully we'll see something with contested cases to help these folks sort of work their way through getting back online.
Yes, there are a number of lessies slash borrowers that are included in those 180 numbers that you provided. Our Loans Services Branch, in fact, will have two before you tomorrow. But we're looking to, again, restart that effort of getting these borrowers to begin payments or come up with a agreeable repayment plan. If that's unsuccessful, the commission can expect hearings to accelerate.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
I just, so one of the thing, one of the reasons we ask is because the department is doing tremendous work to try to fill our numbers. And at the same time, try to do the work that so many beneficiaries are demanding of us in an, in a department that is grossly underemployed. And one of the things that we should recognize is while we're fighting on both those fronts, we could use help from the associations and our beneficiaries who are asking for help. Well, we need help too with the ledge and we need people to rise up and say, hey, we want these services, we want this development, we need to reduce the waitlist. And they can talk to us all day long, but they need to be supporting our initiatives in the ledge. And that's, that's part of the reason we're asking the question, not, not for any other reason, but to recognize how hard the department's working to take care of all of those, those underfunded, unfilled positions. So thank you.
Commissioner Kalakini? So one last comment for, for you, Chair. 50 positions out of 200 is substantial. That, you know, so I, I can feel for like when testimony comes in and say, hey, how come to 10 years, 20 years, 30 years? I mean, I'm sure that's part of it, not all of it, but.
Right. You know, when I, when I took this position, I think it had 40% vacancies. And we've been trying to, and we brought on quite a few people, some kind of higher end regarding expertise, individuals. That's one of the reasons why I think we're doing okay on our strategic plan and getting that moving. But I do, you know, would like to reach out to our commissioners, including existing staff, as well as the people in the audience. We are looking for workers. It's been a real, real challenge in getting, and then, you know, we, we don't pay that much unfortunately. And also, especially in the Homestead Services Division, you know, that's, that's a tough job. I mean, dealing with, you know, in a lot of cases, angry people that, you know, you gotta kind of placate and figure out solutions and work with. So I, I give, you know, a lot of credit to Juan and his staff, but they are overworked. We do need more workers. And that's why when I went to the governor and I told him, hey, you know, we got these 19 positions that are approved by the legislature, but they're unfunded. And so we can recruit for those because there's no money to pay them. And so he recognized that. And he also recommended me, suggested that there was an individual that was really good that we could use. And, you know, I did check the guy out and he is good. So he asked me, well, how much money you need? So I told him $2 million. And without blinking an eye, he made that available. So that is being used for the other new positions, the 16 that we're looking at. So there is the, not only the funding, but more importantly, the jobs that are, especially on the outer islands where we really need help. So I do appreciate, you know, recommendations, if you can refer people that you think might help the program, even on the clerical side, you know, they don't, they don't have to be engineer or whatever. We got clerical jobs, we got engineering jobs, you know, we got loans, processing individuals that we need, all kinds. So please, if you know anybody that's looking for a job, let us know. Okay, anything else? Okay. Thanks, Juan.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Juan. Okay, just to announce that on the agenda item E1, which is regarding the West Hawaii updates and all the projects we're doing, we're going to defer and present that tonight at the community meeting. As well as G4, which is update of on a plan implementation of West Hawaii region. Yeah. And that one is very, very informative about what we're doing in all the different regions on the big islands. So I'd say that especially those out there, beneficiaries, please do attend if you want to find out what's going on. And that will be on the website. Okay, and next item, G5, for information only, West Hawaii Water Projects and Issues Update.
For information only, the planning office is going to give a brief update on West Hawaii projects and issues as we normally do when the commission visits a particular, particular region. With me today, I have Sharie Kaanana, who is the Department's Water Program Specialist, who will be giving the update.
Aloha Chair and Commissioners. We are bringing this in furtherance of our Hawaiian Homes Commission Water Policy Plan Priority Goal Number One. Next slide, please. And in this update, we will just be going over West Hawaii, which is shown in this map here. Um, next slide, please. And so in the submittal in the packet, it is broken into six different parts. The first goes over our water demands for our lands and our water reservations that were approved by the Commission on Water Resource Management. It also goes over potential water sources for our lands in North Kona. Lily already touched upon this in G2. It also goes over advanced water credits for West Hawaii, a proposed temporary water subsidy, which you just heard from Lily in G1. Changes to the state's permitting process for well construction pump installation permits. And then finally, related work with our beneficiaries and capacity building to secure water sources and address water issues. And so I will be going over just the blue today. Next slide, please. Thank you. At the February Hawaiian Homes Commission Meeting, item E2 was approved, and this was the memorandum of agreement between DHHL and Hawaii County Department of Water Supply. This established a framework for collaboration to enhance water infrastructure and ensure timely delivery of our homesteads in North Kona. DHHL will allocate up to $1.5 million to Department of Water Supply for water system equipment to improve redundancy and resiliency to the North Kona water system. In exchange, DHHL will receive advanced water credits and water meters for 200 housing units in La Yopua. The Commission on Water Resource Management, otherwise known as the Water Commission, uses a uniform approach to define aquifer boundaries and sustainable yields across the Paiina, relying on surface geology and a simple basal lens model. Now, this method overlooks unique features like lava tubes and doesn't fully account for rainfall variations or well specifics. It also fails to address unique water sources like deep confined aquifers and interconnected surface and groundwater systems. Statewide, the Water Commission requires well construction pump installation permits. These permits are needed when someone wants to develop a well or replace a pump on an existing well. Until recently, these permits lacked public review and impact analysis on public trust purposes of water, like our DHHL water reservations. This lack of transparency, particularly with previous delegation processes, neglected native Hawaiian rights and cultural practices, preventing DHHL review of these proposed processes. Only in designated water management areas, none of which exist on Hawaii Islands, are water use permits required. And these permits have a public trust notice and do require capa'aka' analysis. Water, the Water Commission, after initially delegating well construction pump installation permits approvals to the Commission on Water Resource Management's Chairperson in the 1990s, began reconsidering this delegation in late 2023 and proposed changes to this process in June of 2024 to limit this delegated authority. DHHL requested deferral and consultation citing confirms about transparency and impacts to our water rights. The Commission deferred this to meet with our staff. They were very welcoming of our concerns and incorporated this into their outreach in their July 2024 updated submittal, which was approved. The Water Commission agreed to not delegate permits in aquifers where DHHL has a water reservation. Instead, they will send DHHL all the well construction installation, well construction pump installation permits in aquifers where DHHL has a reservation for review. If any issues come up upon review, then Water Commission staff can take those permits to the actual commission for approval, instead of just delegating it to their chairperson. I know I had a longer title for that slide previously, but essentially it is our water law training. So this training came up because in June of 2022, the Hawaii County Council considered a charter amendment that would include a DHHL representative seat on their council. Even though this didn't survive a second hearing, what it did do was it created significant conversation among beneficiaries and homestead leaders. And it really got people talking about, if we can't have a seat, then why don't we just train so that we can be ready for when there is an opportunity? So in collaboration with the William S. Richardson School of Law's Kuhuliao Center for Excellence in Native Hawaiian Law, we have held four cohorts across, with participants across the Paiina so far, and in an amazing show of advocacy at Dr. Jonathan Lekeke Shoyer's County Council Confirmation on February 25th for the East Maui Water Authority seat. We had over 17 testimonies written and oral in support. So that was really great to see. Just an FYI, this Friday, he will be going through the final Maui County Council Confirmation Hearing if folks want to practice their advocacy as well. I can speak to people if they have more questions about information for that. And then our next cohort for our water law training begins in one week from now. We're very excited to see the next steps for this. And that is all. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
Chair Banek.
Commissioner Nevis?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I've signed up for the water class and got my daughter signed up, my grandson, 50 years old. He's all excited about it. So, yeah, we're, we're really interested in that, to understand the water policy. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. All right, we have come to the end of today's agenda. Tonight's DHHL Community Meeting starts at 6:30 PM at Ka'ilapa Community Association Center located at 61-4016 Kai'opai Place, Kamua'ala, Hawaii. Tomorrow's agenda will be, begin at 9:30 AM. We are recessed for today.